Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Franklin Board of Education meeting for May 8th, 2024. The meeting has been properly posted. We have a roll call, please, Mrs. Larson.
Yes, Dr. Khan.
Here.
Mrs. Sapersky.
Here.
Mrs. Yank.
Here.
Mr. Sprague.
Here.
Dr. Beer.
Here.
Mrs. Wackowski.
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Wackowski, seconded by Mrs. Sapersky. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Countrydale School Presentation. Mrs. Sapersky, please.
Hello, welcome. If it's Countrydale fans, want to come up and sit at the table? It has been my pleasure to be the school board liaison for Countrydale this year. It's been fun to work with Ms. Shawn and learn about Countrydale and see classrooms. Attend the concert the other night, which was fabulous, by the way. Good job. And they're here tonight to talk about their school improvement team focusing on high-leverage instructional strategies in their PLCs. But what we're going to hear tonight is some specific examples about their worked examples. This is the strategy they're going to be talking about tonight. So you have the floor.
Thank you so much for that introduction. It's so great to be here tonight. And I am here with a couple of teachers and students. And we're really excited to share some of the work that we've been doing at Countrydale this year. So want to start with a little bit of background about what we've been working on as a school. So we have focused our goals primarily around ELA growth in students. We recognized at the beginning of the school year that our students were achieving at high levels, and we wanted to ensure that they were growing at just as high of levels. And so we started the school year with our growth, ELA growth, at the 42nd percentile. And our goal would be to get to the 50th percentile by the end of the year. 50th percentile in growth means one year's growth in one year's time. So that was our big focus for our work together this year. Really excited to have our, some of our team members here tonight. In fact, should we go down the table and introduce ourselves?
Tara Pernataro.
Julie Knoller.
And Jill John.
Jackson Fuller.
Mackenzie Alley.
So some of the members you can recognize up in the picture, but some of our members are not here tonight. And so we wanted to recognize, this is the team that came together for the first time in August. And we really dove into data, used root cause analysis, and arrived at our goals and our next steps for the school year. One of our big focuses this year was an emphasis on high-leverage instructional strategies. We really leaned into John Hattie's research, which focuses on effect sizes of different instructional strategies. These were the five high-leverage strategies that we focused on during the school year. And tonight, we're going to zoom into one strategy in particular, which is worked examples.
So as a sit team, we spent some time learning together. And then through that article from Hanover, and then together as a team, we planned a rollout to the staff for during January's Professional Development Day, where we divided up the high-leverage strategies you saw on the previous slide amongst the school improvement team to model and implement in our classrooms. And then on our January Professional Development Day, our staff rotated through these presentations, and they got to see the different high-level strategies in use and how we implemented them in our classroom, and what our student learning outcomes were when we tried these strategies. And then teachers got to brainstorm, and then that led into the future PD for the rest of the school year and our focuses on the different strategies throughout the remaining part of the year, where teachers had that PD, the PLC time, and common planning time to grow in that. As a teaching strategy, worked examples provide students with a step-by-step demonstration of how to solve a problem. By making that problem-solving strategy explicit, students first learn the process. This then frees up their working memory for them to use when putting this process into action. After staff learning on worked examples in January, we were encouraged to implement this strategy as part of our already-established curricular routines. For example, in my second-grade classroom, I taught addition and subtraction strategies, such as the error way to teach the process for solving. We also noticed as a class that there were multiple ways to achieve the correct answer. And this gave the students a success and accomplishment.
What you see here is an example from my 4K classroom. As a 4K teacher, my role is to prepare my 4K students to be ready to write a story in kindergarten. And so the way that I prepare them is I first share with them an example of the steps they would need to follow in order to create a story. From there, I then model, you'll see that second picture is my picture that I did for my students, modeling those for them. And then after we do that, then students have the opportunity to come up and share their examples with their peers. Since I have two classes, I take examples from my morning class and share them with my afternoon class as an example of other student work, so that they can get more ideas of what maybe they want to add in their work. The other example is an example of the fifth grade example, which our two friends are going to share more about. But that kind of leans into what I was sharing at the end, about how I use some of my morning examples, which are student examples, and I share those with my afternoon students, so that they can get some ideas.
So one thing we wanted to emphasize in our presentation is these instructional strategies that we focused on as a school, they are used all the way from 4K to fifth grade. And it looks obviously different. So we don't have any 4Kers here tonight, but I did do a video with them. So they're going to share with you a little bit about how it's impacted them. But I'm so excited. I have Shanaya and Aliana with me here today. And we are going to share a little bit about what we've been working on in 4K. So can you show me your pictures? And can each of you share something you're proud of in your picture? What makes you proud of that part? I love that you added floaties to your picture. That was really cool. That's okay. Shanaya, what makes you proud about your picture? I love it. And Shanaya, how did you know that you should put a sun in your picture?
There's a sun at the beach in the morning.
And was there a sun on Mrs. Bealow's picture?
Yes.
Did that kind of help guide you? Awesome. Do you love being in 4K? Yay! There's a little example from 4K. And then I'm really excited to have two students with me tonight to share a little bit about their experience in fifth grade. So we are going to ask each of them a little bit of a question if you want to move to the next slide.
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. So this is an example from their classroom. And Mackenzie, I would like you to share, what does it feel like to see your work on the board during class?
It feels good because I know that my, what I've been doing is going to help others, and it knows I should continue what I've been doing in class.
Awesome. Thank you, Mackenzie. And Jackson, how does seeing other students' work help you on your work?
It helps me improve my work. If I don't have like something that I, like, if they have something that I don't have, I can maybe like jot it down and use that work and move to the next step.
Awesome. Thanks for sharing. So one thing that you'll notice with the 4K example with worked examples is that it's really around Mrs. Bealow's example most of the time. But as you get further along in the grades with fifth grade, the worked examples are more from classmates. And so as the grades get older, the agency shifts more to the students, which is awesome. Want to talk a little bit about the impact that we've had on student learning this year at Countrydale? So as I shared at the beginning, our goal has been to get to the, at least the 50th percentile in growth by the end of the school year. So we started at the 42nd percentile. And in the winter, we grew to the forty, almost 49th percentile, which would be almost seven percentile points from the beginning of the school year. So we're really excited to see the efforts of some of our work. And we're excited to see where students end in the spring as they begin testing as we speak. Thank you.
Yeah, please.
We should try to do a picture with the whole. If parents want to get a picture of their kids, you can pop on up here, too.
A bunch of pictures.
Good job.
All right, thank you, everyone. We will move on to community comment. So we have a number of, a number of people signed up for community comment, a couple of which are teachers in the district, but not Franklin residents. So I'll ask the board again if you'd like to waive that, if you'd like to waive that them being residents of Franklin, and I also suggest that at some point, we talk about that. If we do do that, we should talk about what the policy is, so that we don't talk about changing the policy if we'd like to do that.
We have been waiving it, so I think for now, it would probably be consistent with our practice over the past couple of weeks. But I agree, we need to revisit our implementation of that policy.
Yes, or the wording of the policy, if that's what we decide. Obviously, we're not going to talk about that tonight.
But that's just my opinion.
Anybody else feel that same way? All right. Thank you. Apparently, that's consensus. So I'm just going to call you up in order. And please keep it to three minutes. I'm not going to read the entire community comment rules, because you're frequent flyers. So Paula Bausch, please.
Hello. Got to write this down. All right. So thank you first off for letting me speak during this time. I feel my 27 years as a teacher here has made me a part of Franklin community. So that's why I'm here. Some of you may know me. My name is Paula Bausch. I currently teach at Franklin High School. I am a veteran of 27 years. I've taught at every level and every building in this district. Hence, I'm part of this community because they're part of my heart. But the most important thing you need to understand about me is that I love my job, more than anything. My days consist of interacting with 75 to 80 students in my classroom, and that does not even come close to how many kids just stopped to say hi. Many of us electives are the safe space for so many of our students. We all know high school was not an easy time, and everybody needed that safe space. Well, many of us electives are your children's safe space. Okay? See, I get very emotional because this is my life. Okay? Students choose to take our courses because that is where they feel the most comfortable and the most confident to learn and to grow. Why am I saying this? Why are the emotions showing? Well, the new salary schedule ladder system that the administration will be proposing in two weeks is dividing teachers. And one of the division is due to the subject matter we teach. I would love to have an explanation as to what the difference between any of us teachers are, no matter what curriculum we teach. Yes, we know we all have unique situations and spaces, but there's one thing that ties every single teacher in this district together. It is our dedication to your children, to their success, to their safety. And that is what brings every teacher a huge bunch of joy as we walk out that building and get ready to come back the next day. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula Dryer, please.
The other half of Paula squared. Hello again. If we meet any more often, I may have to invite you to my Memorial Day barbecue in a few weeks, but here goes. First, I want to again thank you for listening to us two weeks ago and helping to come to a more manageable solution to our health insurance problem. I am asking you to do the same in two weeks, on May 22nd. As you all know, the Better Place to Work Committee has been meeting all year, and last night presented to the high school staff a salary schedule. This was not developed by the committee, but brought to the committee, and then it was shared with us last night. In this schedule, they have different categories of teachers making different salaries. This should not be the case. Core subject teachers, elementary school teachers, middle school teachers, high school teachers, elective teachers, we make an impact. We make a difference. Special ed electives, they shouldn't be broken down. We are all united. We should all be working together in the district. And I think at times, the district is either willfully or unwillingly, perhaps even strategically, pitting us against each other, which is absolutely not what we want to do. In this particular salary schedule, the incentive to remain in Franklin your entire career, like I have for 33 years, has been taken away. After dedicating my life to Franklin, I expect, and quite frankly, we all deserve, something more. Thank you.
Before I call Mary up, I'd like to say something. I've heard two people say that this is a, this is a something that administration has brought to teachers and not developed with teachers. I know we're going to talk about the Back to Work Task Force today, but that is not my understanding of it from being at that meeting and from hearing things this year. This is a group effort of things we'd like to, of things we'd like to help with teachers of the district, working with teachers going forward. And I appreciate, I appreciate that these groups are coming together and working together to help Franklin be a better place to work. This is what we're going to see is a good starting point. And I'd like to see it continue to move forward together. Thank you. Mrs. Carol Lewich, please.
Later tonight, you will hear the presentation of the work done by the Better Place to Work Committee. And I thank them, the members that are here, and those that could make it to the meeting. I thank them for their willingness to serve in this endeavor. As far as I'm aware, most of the building staffs have heard this information, except for Ben Franklin, which I believe is being delivered tomorrow, and then the middle school. Many of the teachers in the buildings will accept the information without question, but there are those with institutional knowledge and longevity who do. And they are looking for a little love and consideration from a district to which they have dedicated and devoted their lives and careers. So I am passing on this suggestion from a long-term Pleasantview staff member who brought it up at the meeting. Dr. Khan and Mrs. Wackowski were there. Her suggestion was, how can we show a little love to and respect to those teachers who were employed by Franklin prior to Act 10 and have remained with Franklin since? And she suggested, and you will, maybe you've already seen the plan, I don't know. But there are approximately 90 teachers who will receive a median adjustment, a median adjustment, and 57 who will receive longevity adjustments. And as well as those two adjustments, and some individuals may be getting both, it was also suggested that they get the 2.44 balance of the aggregate CPI increase on top of those other bumps. She had hoped that just for this year, since we are going to a salary schedule which has not existed since 2013, maybe, 2012, it was suggested that perhaps you would consider giving the people who are getting these larger increases, these bumps for their median and longevity adjustments, giving their portion of the CPI aggregate to people who were employed in Franklin before Act 10, as well as the 2.44%, whatever they were going to get anyway. As you heard, people that are here and have stayed here love their jobs and their students. And they've chosen to stay here. And at the time that Act 10 was passed, some of those long-term educators were also working on their master's degrees, but were, and were promised a bump after they earned their master's degrees, but that never materialized. When staff questioned Judy Miller, who was then the HR director, they were told that their graduate work wouldn't be considered under the new Act 10 system. So providing this little extra bump, or mini bump, as I call it, in addition to the 2.44% increase that they would have gotten, might go a long way to make these teachers feel like they really are respected and valued. As far as the market goes, no market will ever fully appreciate K-12 education, teachers, anybody that works in the schools, who provide the stepping stones and building blocks for every other profession out there, including education, medical, engineering, technology, and business professionals. While I know that this committee worked very hard to develop a system that appears equitable, from the get-go, there is inequity built in, which I hope does not impede retaining excellent gen ed elective and special education classroom teachers. Their starting salary will be about 50K, those three categories. But they also will have responsibility for somewhere between 25 to 125 kids daily to manage. And I know that there's a, there is a group in that schedule that will start at $57,000, just by becoming a specialist from the start. So when you look at that, 50,000 to 57, why would you even consider being a classroom teacher? I'm hoping that that's not the case, but I hope that there will be a future for teachers who will find value in classroom teaching of our young and vulnerable youth and will remain with our district for their entire careers, like some of the individuals sitting here tonight. And I am a taxpayer, and I have come to love this district as well. But I, I hope that you will listen and think long and hard about how we have treated the people who have worked for this district for so long. And it just seems like, especially the older teachers who were, some of who were here when my children were in school and your children, just don't seem to get a break. So I thank the committee members. I know that many of them are, are looking forward to teaching and looking forward to their careers here at FPS. I just hope that they stay. Thank you very much.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Larson, seconded by Dr. Beer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Since that's done, I'd like to welcome Amanda Pound, who will be the new Director of Teaching and Learning, starting next year. Also, of note, Jordan Heine will be the new principal at Ben Franklin. So those were just approved. Congratulations. We're lucky to keep Stephanie Jewell in the district, and she will, she will move to the district office. So the current principal at Ben Franklin. So with that, welcome Amanda and Jordan. School Board Calendar, regular Board of Education meeting, Wednesday, May 22nd, 2024, at the ECC at 6:00. School Board Self-Evaluation Work Study, Tuesday, May 28th, 2024, at the ECC at 6:00. FHS Graduation, Saturday, June 8th, one month from today, 2024. American Family Field at 4:00 PM, and Franklin Forward Workshop Resolution Discussing, June 12th, at the ECC at 6:00. And a Board of Education meeting on June 19th at the ECC, also at 6 o'clock. District Administrator update. Mrs. Bennet, please.
All right, thank you. So it's exciting this week to be celebrating teacher appreciation, but also it's our week that we celebrate all staff, because otherwise it'd be days sprinkled throughout the year. It's nice to make it a week of celebration. We've had great PTO support, school board and school district bringing treats to the schools, administrators doing special things for staff. So just a nice shout-out to all of our staff. It's nice to have a good group here tonight, too, in support of ELA, to celebrate the work that they've been doing. Next week's another celebration, as we have our retirement dinner. So it's always a bittersweet moment as people move on from the district into their retirement goals. But that dinner will be next week. The Sabre Center, I've said at the last couple of meetings, it continues to go. It's very busy with concerts for all of our elementary schools, our band, our orchestra, choir, et cetera. So I think it's like 17 shows that will take place there, or maybe about halfway through. So there's still plenty of opportunity to see performances of our learners of all ages. As we look forward to summer, the elementary and middle school summer learning programs are ready to kick off. Our schedules have been sent out. Thank you to Mr. Blessington and Ms. Sandstrom, who's in the audience, for all the work they've done with the team to get that ready. It will be at the middle school again, across the drive. There's 220 middle school students signed up, 568 elementary school students. So much like last year, it'll be busy halls, but a lot of excitement going on. And then this coming Saturday is our Construction 2 Class Celebration, as we cut ribbon at the school that they partner with, Tim O'Brien Homes, to build. So that's a culmination of their project through the year, building a house that'll be sold to a new family or existing family that's staying in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. All right, we'll get on to the reports, presentations, and other board business. Annual Curriculum Review, Adoption, ELA. Mr. Blessington, please.
All right. That table's going to be quite something with all of you around it.
Yeah, we have a plan for that, so.
We have a plan, a little mini plan.
Before, before we get into, you know, you have a copy of the, obviously, the board report. We want to start off with some introductions, just because this group has worked extremely hard this year. And I'm going to, we're going to start at the table and kind of work our way down. But introductions may take a little bit. I ask when you do introductions, if you just, obviously, say your name and your, the school that you support and your, in your role. So we'll just, we'll continue with that, so. So we'll just, we'll continue with that, so.
Chelsea Beardsley, I teach second grade at Southwood Glen. I have Mr. Cromie's daughter in my class.
Carly Gordy, instructional coach at Pleasant View Elementary.
Sarah Phan, sixth grade at Forest Park.
Maureen Strauss, I'm at Southwood Glen, third grade.
Anita Sunstrom, curriculum coordinator.
Molly Mitchell, I teach third grade at Pleasant View.
Amanda Boris, first grade at Ben Franklin.
Tara Pernicharo, first grade at Countrydale.
Melissa Campbell, I'm an instructional coach both at Ben Franklin and Countrydale.
Paige Awiki, fifth grade at Countrydale.
Elizabeth Fritsch, instructional coach at Southwood Glen Elementary.
Jenny Palachek, EL teacher at Robinwood.
Denise Ryan, ESL teacher at Southwood Glen and Countrydale.
Judith Hernawiki, seventh grade reading at Forest Park.
Lydia Boss, seventh grade reading at Forest Park.
Shelley Walker, sixth grade reading Forest Park.
Hi, Kelly Schultz, instructional coach at Ben Franklin.
Nate Jenkins, instructional coach, Forest Park.
Michelle Street, instructional coach at FHS.
Jenna Rosinski, principal of Forest Park Middle School. That's everyone.
All right, we have, we do have a couple of our recommended vendor, representatives from our recommended vendor today, so I'm going to just have them introduce themselves. Thank you.
My name's Peter Buckta, and I'm with Savvas Learning Company.
Hi, Neely Dobagai with Savvas Learning Company, curriculum specialist.
All right, I'm impressed with the range of these mics. We weren't sure if that worked out. All right, so you can see we have a, a really diverse audience here today. There are some members that couldn't be here today. But as we get into the work, we're going to hit, hit on some high points that are in the, the board plan, and, and then opportunity to open, open up for some questions. But really, when we think about the work with our ELA team this year, it really is a continuation of our curriculum continuous improvement. So when we look at ELA, and we look at continuous improvement, I'm really proud of the work that we're going to get into. And we think about the work in, in Franklin, you hear a lot about, as board members around Act 20 and districts reacting to that, I'm very proud to say that a lot of our, our work has started long before that, with our work. You know, I think, I think back to some conversations had with Dr. Beer as early as a year and a half ago. So this team has done incredible work, and I look forward to just kind of handing it off right now, and then, them to share. And like I said, you're going to have an opportunity to ask some questions. So I'm going to turn it over to Anita right now.
Yeah, so in addition to what you're going to hear in detail from our team, I did want to remind you, yes, we've been doing this work for multiple years. We're really committed to continuous improvement, and all of our literacy teachers have been digging deep into learning that sets us up in a great spot. Every literacy teacher in the district has worked deeply to understand the updated ELA standards, and really analyze them, think through the skills that are embedded in the standards, and how they progress vertically. You saw quite a representation of grade levels here. We've worked to prioritize standards, so standards are very interconnected, and learning is interconnected, we know that. Being able to prioritize standards and really dig into some help us with transferability and manageability and all of those pieces. And each one of these teachers has been deeply involved in all of our literacy teachers in thinking through, how do we gather evidence of student learning towards standards? Where are students in the progression of their learning? How do we reflect evidence of that and collect evidence? So as part of what Bob was saying, this larger work that all of our staff that works in literacy has been digging into. And then I'm hoping we could focus in a little bit on what these two teams have been doing this year, specific around a resource for ELA. So Chelsea and Carly, if you guys want to take it away about what our team has been doing.
Perfect. So over the past year, our team here has been really actively engaged in exploring the latest research and methodology, methodologies surrounding literacy instruction, particularly those grounded in the scientific principles. This includes understanding how language develops, how to teach reading effectively, and how to support those struggling readers. We've undergone professional development with Lexia Letters. We're in the first volume of that as a, a team here, which is a comprehensive literacy program designed to enhance educators' understanding of language and literacy development. This training equips us with the tools and strategies necessary to address the diverse needs of our students. We've taken a close look at the state legislation, such as Act 20, which outlines expectations and requirements for early reading instruction on our region. By staying informed about these mandates, we ensure that our instructional practices are in alignment with legal standards and best practices. We've utilized professional evaluation information from Ed Reports, an independent nonprofit that reviews instructional materials to guide our selection of resources to pilot. By leveraging their insights, we were able to identify high-quality materials that align with Wisconsin's ELA standards, ensuring that our curriculum is both rigorous and relevant.
We then actively engaged with different vendors, meeting with the representatives, and assessing the samples that were provided. This process helped us identify the most promising resources for our needs. After thorough consideration, we narrowed down to two high-quality resources. These resources have shown great potential to meet our requirements and improve our learning outcomes. We chose teachers to pilot these resources in their classrooms. These teachers received training and access to all necessary materials to effectively implement the new resources. Our pilot teachers integrated the new resources into their ELA instruction, teaching practices, and gave us valuable insights into their effectiveness. We maintained regular communication with the vendors to address any issues that arise during the pilot phase. This ensured that our pilot teachers had the support that they needed to succeed. Our team stayed connected through the pilot process to discuss progress, review data, and share insights. These regular check-ins allowed us to adapt our approach as needed and make informed decisions. Regardless of which resource our teachers piloted, every member of our team is fully behind our decision. We have reached a unanimous consensus that Savvas MyView offers the best possible solution for our staff and students.
That's okay, I'm very loud. Sorry. After extensive evaluation and consideration, our team has identified that My Perspectives and MyView not only meets, but exceeds our expectations when considering our criteria. The curriculum we are recommending has risen to the top across all areas that we evaluated. This is a testament to its comprehensive nature and suitability for our district's needs. One of the standout features of this curriculum is how closely aligned its resources are with the Wisconsin State Standards in English Language Arts. Our evaluation revealed that the curriculum excels in this aspect, ensuring that our students are receiving instruction that is in line with the educational standards set forth by the state and the district. Additionally, teachers have noted that this curriculum facilitates their ability to regularly and consistently gather evidence of student learning towards these standards. This is a crucial component in ensuring that our students are progressing academically. The curriculum tools within MyView and MyPerspectives have demonstrated exceptional support for reading, writing, and speaking and listening skill development. These tools not only enrich the learning experience, but also empower both teachers and students in the mastery of these essential skills. Having tools and resources readily available to support students at various levels of learning is paramount. Our evaluation also revealed this particular resource demonstrated clear advantages in supporting instruction grounded in the science of reading, especially in key areas that include phonological awareness, phonemic awareness, and reading fluency. Teachers who participated in the MyView Pilot Program described having access to significantly stronger resources in these specific and important areas of reading instruction. The curriculum provided more, a more robust and cohesive instructional plan, making it easier for our students to make meaningful connections during their learning journey.
When considering general curriculum use, MyView and MyPerspectives particularly shown. These resources effectively addressed accessibility for all students, and not simply accessibility, but engagement as well. The participation, joy, and overall positive active energy filled our piloting classrooms. MyView and MyPerspectives gave us clear resources so that we could easily use evidence-based instructional practices, including supporting students collaboratively and in small groups. Teachers also felt strong professional support from the materials and through training and ongoing communication from Savvas. MyView and MyPerspectives allowed us as piloting teachers to better support the Wisconsin ELA vision for students, particularly in demonstrating independence. MyView and MyPerspectives utilize a really clear gradual release of responsibility process that builds confidence and competence individually for students. Speaking from my own experience, it was beyond thrilling to see my third graders independently applying their learning on their own, without prompting, in other subjects and during other times of the day. Additionally, these resources encourage students to respond to varying demands of audience, task, purpose, and discipline, again through repeated focused explicit instruction in these areas. And finally, piloting teachers were able to see in just a few short weeks of using these Savvas resources, that students were not only comprehending text, but they were finding, using, critiquing, and valuing evidence. As a team, we reflected on feedback and experiences from piloting teachers, students, caregivers, and educators in neighboring districts. Piloting teachers provided team members with verbal feedback and provided responses to the rubric addressing the given criteria. Students provided verbal feedback and honestly demonstrated incredible engagement and excitement. Additionally, they gave more formal feedback in online surveys. We also were able to have really valuable conversations with teachers, instructional coaches, administrators, and Directors of Teaching and Learning in neighboring districts to learn more about the daily experience and professional support they've received from vendors. Through this reflection, it was made clear to the team that MyView and MyPerspectives were stronger than every other resource we piloted in every area. With enthusiasm, we recommend MyView and MyPerspectives, and our recommendation of these resources is grounded in considerable study and the contributions of so many people.
Thank you. So we hope this highlights some of the strengths around this recommendations. I'll try to be loud, okay? We did get a couple of questions prior to our presentation that I wanted to address. I think most were addressed by what we shared. Just to reinforce how we started this, one of the questions we got was, in what way are we not knee-jerk reacting to our current curriculum and sort of the public feeling around anti-teacher college mindset? And are we overreacting or overcorrecting? I think you've seen, we've engaged in a very, very thoughtful process around this. Our work has always been around, like, what can we do to best help our students meet these standards and be successful? So we started this work long before the state had developed their legislation, you just heard through that, and we really tried to look through, how will this help our students meet these standards and meet these foundational reading skills that we need for every student? So this has been a multi-year journey. It's going to continue, our own professional learning past this point. So kind of some of the compilations of questions we got, this is not only in response to Act 20, this fully meets all the expectations of Act 20, and it would have done that whether that law passed or not, meets those pieces. So that was a question we had gotten. One other question we had gotten is, how will we be evaluating this curriculum specifically? What outcomes will we be tracking? So obviously, we're actively working to develop an implementation plan, and with your approval, we can kind of carry forward with that. So we'll continue through professional development for our teachers, but over the next couple of years, we'll be looking at, how is this resource living and working in day-to-day life with our students, with our teachers? What supports do we need? What further learning? One of the things that Maureen said that was so true is, when we talked to districts that have started implementing this resource, they felt super supported by the company to meet their district needs and their, like, specific needs they might have there, and professional development could be geared toward that. So we valued that. We will continue to monitor student achievement and growth and all of those pieces with literacy like we do now. The other thing is, Act 20 does have another aspect of the legislation that we haven't necessarily talked about with you guys, and that is, the state is going to develop a universal screener related to early literacy, and that is a little bit of a work in progress. We don't know what that is going to be. They currently timeline it as in July, we will hear what that screener will be, and by January, we would be implementing that. But the nice thing about that piece is, there will be a standard screener that can really look at these early foundational skills, and three times a year, we can kind of be monitoring how students are progressing. There's diagnostic tools and reading plans that will go in place. So lots more to come related to this, but we will have a lot of data sources that we can continue through our continuous improvement to look at. So I think that this highlights a lot of the questions that you had, but we are definitely, literally, all dozens of us, ready to answer all of your questions, so please let us know what else is curious to you.
I had a question.
Very, please.
She's ready.
I'm ready. I just, you've mentioned that universal screener, and I had heard a little bit about that it might not be conducive to English second language learners. Does this program kind of support and enhance the, that population?
The state will decide on, the state will decide on the screener. We're laughing because we were like, how will we navigate twenty-five of us ready to answer your questions? The state will, of course, decide on the screener, but, and how this helps all learners. We have a lot of people who would like to speak to that.
Do you want to talk to me?
Sure, yeah. Not so close. Yeah, so we are the ESL teachers, so we were part of the pilots. So what we found really nice, which I think the general education teachers can echo, is that the teacher guide, right there for every lesson, literally has English language learner modifications, accommodation ideas, and they're divided into light support, moderate support, and substantial support. So with the work with the ESL teachers, we obviously can provide the levels of English language proficiency and what kind of support they would need, light, moderate, or substantial. Besides that, they come with assessment books. There is screeners and assessments specifically for English language learners, designed already as well by domain, so you can screen or assess, like, domains, I mean, reading, writing.
In listening, speaking, reading, and writing, which we assess on a yearly basis through the access test, and we recently received our scores.
Yeah, so you could do that more frequent within the curriculum because it is provided and embedded, and then you can speak to that if you want.
The audio stories? Yeah, there is also an audio story version that is called Success Maker, that offers the stories in the student's native language. Does that answer your question? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Linda, please.
Yes, on the, the Rubik's scoring for the, the lower grades, I noticed that the, the question, "Does this resource encourage students to use technology and digital media strategically and capably?" was the lowest ranking on that. It was 2.59, everything was over three. Are there any concerns about that?
I'm happy to answer, but if somebody else wants to. I think this is, oh, did you want to?
I think we just need more time to dig into it. We really focused heavy on like that curricular piece for the time being, and with our Lexia Core 5 that we've been using, that tool has been our digital resource, so I think we just need more time to dig into it. After talking with other neighboring districts, they, they emphasized how much they liked it, and so we're really excited to dig into it and learn more about it. I did have my first graders try out some of them. They do have the assessments, both hard copy and digitally for a lot of them, which is really nice to have that option as a teacher. My kids were able to do it, but again, you just need more practice, because the way that they respond to things are different than what they're used to. It's not always just clicking and answer. So there's just like, a lot of teaching around that, and in the time of the pilot, we really wanted to, you know, we kind of had to pick and choose what we were going to dive really deep into, so that was something we just kind of like dabbled in. So they were able to get on it and to, you know, start to use it, but there's just a lot more learning that needs to be around there. I would, I would also
I do think it's important we get everybody on the mic, just for the
For the recording.
People who may be
Oh, sorry.
Listening in later.
I would also say, as a piloting teacher, the final week of each of the units really explicitly teaches some different technology skills. So with third grade, we were learning about different websites, and what do the different, you know, dot com versus dot edu? Now, was that a small portion? Yes, because we were piloting one unit, but you definitely saw that with each unit, if you started from the beginning, there were some really, really great technology pieces that we could tell would be in them. But again, like was already said, within a pilot, we were able to get a taste of them, but obviously not experience them throughout the entire piece.
Can you also clarify, when you say it's a resource? I mean, is it books? Is it, is it website? What is this resource we're talking about?
So this is my favorite question. Can I take this one?
Yes.
So like, when we're talking about curriculum, it's really the tie to standards that Anita talked about really well. Like, we're always breaking down and looking at the standards and what best meets the standard, the resource is the tool that helps us meet those standards. So this is a tool that's going to help us meet most of those standards. They spoke really well to the variety of standards, but then also, like Kelly talked about, we use Lexia, and there's other resources we use to maybe hit standards. But then also, like Kelly talked about, we use Lexia, and there's other resources we use to maybe hit standards that aren't hit as strongly with Savis, but it being the resource that hits the majority of the standards. So, I think where the balance comes, or sometimes they get the questions too, is, you know, are we, are we swinging the pendulum too far from, you know, units of study or teachers' college? Well, we went all in on teachers' college, and some districts went all in on that. Some districts used a great tool of that, but, as a resource, but also supplemented with other resources to, to help with queuing or like to look at other aspects of learning. So, when we say resource, it's the tool to help best meet the standards. The standards are in curriculum. Those are what we're teaching to, to reach proficiency and beyond. It may be a variety of resources that we have to use as the tool to get there, if that makes sense. Savis being the biggest one, that's going to best support for our K8 at this point.
So, we're swapping out one big resource for this one, but we have other resources that are staying in place?
Yeah, there's complimentary resources, like Lexi is a great one to use that Kelly brought up. So, that piece comes in, it's a smaller part of the learning that takes place in the ELA block. But it's helping supplement pieces that maybe Savis isn't hitting standards as strongly in. So, we're always looking at number one, standards. How are we hitting those Wisconsin standards at a proficient level? So, not just teaching them, but at a proficient level for all learners. And what tool is best getting us there? Savis is going to best get us there in most ways. But some of those other resources are going to also supplement to hit standards at a proficient level differently.
So, what happens to all those wonderful classroom libraries that we put together? How do they fit into this new resource?
Classroom libraries are, can you hear me? Is this good, Mike? Um, classroom libraries are still invaluable for all of our classrooms. The idea of choice and voice for students and the joy of recreational reading and further exploration. A lot of the pilot teachers said, as students were digging into this huge variety of genres and huge variety of topics, they would immediately want to explore other stories like that or other topics like that. So, classroom libraries are still something that the district is committed to, and we know it builds engagement and builds literacy skills for our students. So, this resource works well with a classroom library, like, these are paired.
I also noticed that the ratings for the upper, the middle school, um, product or resource were much higher than the, the lower grade. Is there a reason for that? Or do we have something now in middle school that we never had before, or?
We currently use units of study K8, so, um, I mean, the products are different. You know, these are, um, rubric ratings based on the teachers. So, the, in both situations, the ratings for this, um, resource were much higher than the other one that we were piloting.
My question was between, why did the middle school teachers kind of seem to rate it higher than the?
Well, I would say there's a larger sample size. We had more teachers at the elementary level, and the, the alternate, uh, things that were piloted were two different programs.
Yeah. Okay. So, they weren't really compared to each other? Like, they're, they're not the same program for this, and the teachers are at different grade levels, so.
Okay, please.
I'm super excited to, to be hearing about this. I started sniffing around all this literacy stuff back when I first started meeting with Bob as, as the liaison. So, it's exciting to see it all come to fruition. Can you, um, comment a little bit more on the whole pendulum situation? And what are we specifically maintaining other than the classroom libraries from units of study? Are there any aspects of that that we're maintaining or, or any, any, is there anything going to be left behind? I, I, I always just worry about too much throwing out the baby with the bathwater.
I think great learning that came from units of study is strong workshop model in a classroom. Um, and how you can meet different learners. So, that won't go away. That's quality teaching. And we got really good at that as a system with units of study and the approach we took with how we implemented that. So, workshop's still going to be strong, and that, that skill set is strong in our teachers. So, that really actually helps because with the Savis implementation, that's a strong piece we have. We can work on other strategies and pieces that this team can talk specifically to that we need to continue to build PD around. And that's been the really great thing too, in reviewing with the team as the work's been going on, is that Savis, I know, I think Anita hit on it a little bit, but they, they've been in district during the pilot, and I think that's really important that our staff is seeing and has that direct contact and immediate response. Because I think for, the resource is great. Where it really gets great is when you have a strong implementation model. And so, we already have a set plan of if this goes through, there's PD built into all six of those days next school year. There's PD built into the August days. There's a full PD day built in in August even before we're fully back to implement and even kickoff before we leave for the summer, for those that just like to have your fingers and resources throughout the summer, or if you want, you know, however that works for all of our staff. So, I think that's another piece. So, we're not losing workshop model. There's great ties there. But I think also with it comes, what new strategies do we need to build up then to work with our learners? And we have a resource and the people that are backing it to help implement with fidelity, um, and through multiple years. Not, here's the resource and we're out in December. Like, here's the resource, we're here all year, and then we'll talk year two. What does that look like?
As a follow-up to that rollout piece, any thought as to how you're going to be communicating all of this to parents who have varying levels of engagement with what their kids' literacy curriculum is?
I, I do think the parents do have a little bit of, uh, of an understanding, this is where we're going, because we did send out the pilot letters. Um, and then we did send out the survey after. So, I know parents understand that there's going to be a decision made if we go through with this, that things are going to change. Um, but I do personally, I did have some parents ask about that as well because they have heard some things about Lucy Hawkins. So, they were wondering if we were, uh, starting to change our direction a little bit and go more standard-based.
And part of our implementation is, of course, working so that every teacher feels really confident around, like, what's our why? And how is this going to help our students learn? Um, most of our parent understanding of what's happening in their child's classroom is through their teacher. So, um, through some of the training that Annalee was talking about, like, we would, um, be able to help teachers feel positioned to be able to explain, here's what's happening this year in third grade and how this does this work, so.
Linda, please.
Can you give us a little bit more background on the company or the curriculum? Is it, it's on the list for the state? You know, is it, who else has this? Are they national, or is it?
It, they are a national company, and you guys interrupt me if I say anything inaccurate, or I might have you continue. Yeah. They're like waiting to see if I got this. This is a national company, and they do meet all the criteria for that, um, state lists about requirements for the science-based literacy. So, when the DPI submitted their recommendation, recommended list for which company's curriculum would be something that could satisfy this, this company was on that list. And what was your other?
Are they other states?
Oh, yeah, uh, widely used around the country and the state. I don't know if off the top of you guys' head you had-
And how long have you been around, or?
I can answer that a little bit. So, um, our, our heritage goes back to Dick and Jane. So, if you remember Scott Forsman, yep, go that far back, and then, uh, more recently Pearson. Pearson is a global company that sold our division about five years ago to, and then we became Savis Learning Company. We're just focused here in K-12 in the U.S., and we're in all 50 states, and we work with districts across, across the country. But we, yeah, we have a rich history of, of literacy.
Anne, please.
First of all, thank you all for all this work. I know, I can only imagine. I guess I really don't know how much time you've put into this, and especially in piloting and, you know, putting that together in your classrooms. So, thank you, and thanks for all the explanation tonight. I mean, I read the whole board report more than once, but hearing from you directly was really helpful in terms of how you really felt it in your classrooms and with your students and things like that. So, I appreciate that. Just, I, I had a question that Linda kind of hit on. The Act 20 has required, not required, but like suggested curriculum, is this one of those or not? Like, I mean, I know it meets all the requirements, but is it on their list of like, suggested or not? And is there any advantage or disadvantage to that?
Yeah, it's on the DPI's list of those that meet the requirements. Um, there is a joint finance committee list, um, that identifies resources that could qualify for, uh, grant.
Yeah, reimbursement.
Reimbursement.
Literacy curriculum.
And this is not on that list.
So, by adopting this, there would be no grant reimbursement towards the cost of it because it's not on the DPI list? Is that?
It is, it is on the DPI.
It's on the DPI list.
DPI list. I can speak a little bit to that. When we looked at our, um, looked at our two vendors that we're considering through our pilot, and we did an extensive cost analysis with that, and we looked at, first of all, the, the reimbursement level would be for K for the third grade. And we looked at, um, the quotes that we secured for both vendors. And we looked at if the maximum that it can be reimbursed is at 50%, that's for the whole state. That is not going to happen. Um, that's, there's a, there's a set amount of funds that are earmarked for that. Likely, it'll be closer to 20% when we did our cost analysis. If we get reimbursed at 47%, which we don't think we will, we would break even on the, the cost. So, um, from a fiscal standpoint, um, first of all, mo-most importantly, it's, it's the superior product we felt. And from a cost perspective, we feel pretty confident that we're going to come out ahead as well.
Thank you.
Mike Stewart, please.
You know, thank you for all the work which you guys are doing. As we all are aware of the challenges the kids, especially with the COVID, have faced in reading and math. And we know that the work done at elementary school translates to their success in the high school and all, and beyond to the college level, you know? How does this program, especially, one of the challenges which I see, the kids' struggle is comprehension, reading comprehension, you know? They can read a book and all that stuff, and when you ask them what it meant, you know, and how do you kind of, you know, can you move the parts around? They are struggling. So, how does this program differentiate from the current program which we had? And what are the benefits to that? That's my first question. And my second question is that, um, I understand this pilot project was around, starting in January for six months. Am I right?
Um, we started, depended exactly when the teacher started, but late January to early February. And then it went until either the end of March, or some are probably still finishing up right around now. So, it just kind of depended flexibility with like where that grade and that teacher happened to be. So, it was like a two to three month chunk of time.
So, did we got any data with the, are we going to get any data of the map testing of how this pilot project affect the grading map? Do you have any data on that?
I would say our pilot's not long enough for me to be able to answer, like, have data like that for this. For your second question, just with, essentially, the teachers did one or two units depending on their grade level and what they were piloting. So, it's not enough time for me to have like, uh, before map data and after map data, just how that falls through the school year and the pilot.
Is there a plan to kind of assess this when this program rolls out in September? To follow up and see how the map testing is scoring? Because I think that's an objective way of assessing how the kids are able to absorb this, uh, information and how implement in their, the teachers are able to implement, and the students are able to kind of, you know, take benefit of that.
Yes, we will definitely continue to monitor through map testing or the screener, however that goes forward, um, how the students are growing through literacy. So, yes to that piece around this would be part of our ongoing monitoring, um, for that. For your first question around, um, how this like better meets this need, I do feel like every single one of you is like vibrating to talk about this. So, I don't know if you people want to talk about how this addresses sort of science-based literacy.
I think your question was specifically about reading comprehension, and you are correct that often in the past or, you know, currently, we see students that are capable of reading the words, but don't understand what they mean and can't interpret the text that they're working with. Um, and so, in the previous workshop model, we would have a small mini lesson. We would suggest to the students, hey, this might be a strategy you use to understand your book. Now, go off for 30, 40 minutes and give it a try. They might try it, they might not. They may have guidance in that from a conference from us or a small group, or they may not. With my view, we do things a little bit differently. We will read through the text for the week altogether. Um, and then the next day, we will go back to that same text as a class, and we will work on a specific comprehension strategy. So, for example, in my classroom last week, we were working on the narrator's point of view. And can we find specific text evidence in the piece that tells us, what is the narrator's point of view? What does that mean about the story? What does that mean about my understanding of what's happening? Um, and so, in that process, Carly can attest, she's been in my room many times. Um, as we go through those close read days and the students start really using those skills specifically together as a whole class, the confidence has soared, and we've seen their comprehension soar as well. So, they're tackling other texts and using those skills specifically again, to the point where now in my classroom, we have independent reading time, and they can choose a, um, focus for the day. You know, I want to focus on this comprehension skill or this one or this one. There's like a list of five, and they can choose them. They can go off for 20 minutes and read on their own, and then they can come back and show me evidence of how they're able to do that independently without prompting from me. So, I think that it speaks very well to their comprehension growth.
You have somebody else who really wants to talk.
Um, Michelle Street, FHS. So, something that I'm thinking about is this connects back to what Annalee was talking about with resources. And it also connects back to, I believe you said your name was Linda, your question on classroom libraries. So, um, what we will find sometimes is that kids who are struggling with comprehension and the letters programming that we've been reading about, like, two-thirds of kids who are struggling with comprehension, we find may have phonological deficits. So, first and foremost, this new curricular resource at all levels is addressing the importance of phonology. Um, I think, I'm so sorry, I don't remember your name. Molly had talked about as well how students are encountering complex text, and they're being led explicitly and gradually through the process of dissecting that, both for, um, word recognition, but then also for comprehension. Um, in this case, because they are being led through by the teacher in an explicit and systemic manner, then they're able to use those classroom libraries and those choice books to be able to apply those strategies. Um, but then they've had that direct explicit modeling. They have a little bit more structured of a time where they would be practicing the strategies, and then they'd be able to come back with their evidence. Um, something else that the Wisconsin State Standards really has an emphasis on, if you look at, I think it's like Appendix 2 or 3, Anita? So, it's the complex text one?
Oh, Appendix 3.
3, okay.
We studied it a lot.
Yeah. So, I bring it up only because, um, the state spends a significant amount of time defining what does complex text mean and look like. They have quantitative factors, qualitative factors, um, and, um, like, different text features that they take and look at as well. Um, something that, from my limited perspective, the resources do is that students have access to complex text within the scope at least of the shared read aloud. So, they are having some more direct explicit instruction in how to deal with those complex texts as opposed to only choice text that they dig into. Um, we, our goal is to stretch readers, and that's how you grow. You go where you need to grow, right? And sometimes we don't choose like a text that might be like more complex or meeting the needs that you might have necessarily because we're really into a specific genre. But, um, it sounds like Molly, you've found a way to be able to put together like, students have those classroom libraries for independent choice reading, but then they're also practicing these skills in a complex text in a supported manner with their teacher.
I, I'd just like to say that a group this large, who's worked this long and this hard on something like this, I see the excitement. Usually, there's some sort of consensus. This seems like unanimity, um, and, and that-
Not anonymity.
Did I say unanimity?
No, you said unanimity.
Thank you. And so, um, I, I just appreciate that everybody here seems excited to move forward with this. That's talking about it, and that's a professional. So, um, I, I certainly, there could be more questions, but, um, um, but I'm just, I'm impressed. All right. Linda, did you have something to add?
So, you know, a year from now, it would be great to have you all come back. And what piece of, one piece of data could we look at to know if we're going in the right direction? You had to pick one thing or? I mean, it's got to be, I mean, what would the vendors say they're most? I mean, you've seen your curriculum develop. What is the most exciting piece of data that people can look forward to?
Neely, you're living it now.
Well, you're asking the right person. I love you guys, so.
I think first and foremost, we li-we like to work within your system. I mean, the one thing that we knew right away when we were working with the teachers and working with your administration is you're very clear that you want a system. I think there's a couple of places. You're very much about standards driving the process. Any one of our unit-based assessments, formative pieces too, I think, are central in a professional learning community district. So, you could look at those, but I'm a fan of project-based learning for kids. If you truly want gradual release of responsibility and a connection to kids' culture, look to see what they're producing.
look to see what they're producing independently. It's the intersection of reading, writing, listening, speaking, and it's, they're doing the work. You know, how cool is that, that they have voice and choice and engagement? And so those are a couple places, but there's not just one, you know, right choice. So I hope that that was good enough.
Can I ask one last question? Is there going to be any, oh. Whoa, okay, there was some, there was some flapping.
I think I was just going to mention that back in, I think, September, we talked about equitable multi-level systems of support. So we wouldn't come back a year from now and not talk about it in between. So we're really lucky to have the system set up to talk about kids' progress every four, eight, and 12 weeks with teams at our school. So it's always on our radar, and we're always looking at that data, so, yeah.
I was just curious, with all the talk about the value of explicit instruction, which is very exciting to hear about, will there be any efficiencies gained with this resource? Will this, will this potentially be freeing up time in, at any level?
I mean, I'm confident, I think, we'll most importantly produce better readers in our system.
Absolutely.
The cost for intervention and having to remediate, those are some like long-term things that we may realize.
That's what I was going to couple with too, is I think that we're spending a lot of time filling back gaps right now. As teachers, having to go back and use resources, other resources that, oh, this kid has this gap from kindergarten, oh, this kid. So I think we're spending so much of our time right now trying, with our interventions, trying to fill those gaps. So our goal here was to pick a much stronger tier-one resource so that we wouldn't, you know, and it might not be the first year because those kids are going to have those gaps from this year too. But that down the line, that those kindergartners, the time they get to me in second grade, I'm not having to teach short vowels still. Right, so we're trying to get that stronger tier-one resource to hopefully free up some of that time that we're using for the tier-two and tier-three interventions right now.
Thanks.
Thank you. Linda, please.
I know that you're doing your data, what do you call that thing in August where you get together and?
Leadership retreat?
And it would be nice if you could, again, I want to go back to data, you know, is this curriculum going to matter? And it sounds like you're really excited, but what would be, you're going to be watching more closely to know that this curriculum makes a difference. If you could figure out and talk about that in your August leadership meeting to say, well, what do we really think this impact's going to be? You talk about that root cause thing that you do. And how does that curriculum, where does that fit in this root cause? And then what comes out at the end? What are you expecting to come out at the end? And how soon?
Yeah, we'll continue to look at that. It's really looking at the standards and meeting or exceeding proficiency in the standards. Right, so when Jenna talks about the EMLSS process and the four-eight 12-week check-ins, those are the opportunities through the expertise of our educators. And knowing those standards, that's why we spent years defining together through that continuous improvement curriculum time, what does it mean to be proficient in the standards? If we don't have those conversations, then Michelle may define the standard one way, and then Anita another way, and then Kelly another way, and Molly another way, and then we're not getting to proficient. So like to say there's, it's not like giving out a math test and testing multiplication facts, right? We could say we're here and we want to get here. When you're testing reading and you're looking at comprehension, it's really how you're applying those skills. In anything it is, right? Math, you're doing those basic facts to build better when you get to algebra, then more complex math. But in literacy, when we're looking at it, we're really looking at the standard and proficiency. And we're talking in those four-eight 12-week meetings and in our professional learning communities about what does that look like that the students are demonstrating? And between our educators, if I'm sitting with, by Molly and I'm sitting with my third-grade team, we're also showing our student work, and we're comparing our student work to get to that proficient level. That's where we're really seeing if the students are learning. And so it's not as clean as bringing a MAPS test score to you and saying, look where we are a year later. It's really in that deep dive and how they're talking about they have to go back and dip into other skills because we have some gaps, right? We're going to hope to have less of those gaps, right? We're going to hope to see growth scores coming in a little bit higher to grow a little bit more. Like it's more than hope, but it, the tough part in the question about what will we see in a year is it's an implementation year, and I think Neely and Savas could speak to, in an implementation year, you can, you're going to see a variety of data because the staff is learning along with the students. But in three years, we're going to see students that are better learners, and you're going to notice it in the scores that are coming through regularly in maps or whatever our universal screener is, and through our more lagging data like forward. But in those first years, it's the implementation, it's staff learning at the same pace as students to stay a day ahead. In the second year, they're a week ahead, right? In the third year, they're, they're already planning the next unit while we're working on one unit. But it's understanding that it takes staff time to learn that and implement that piece too. So I guess I, we will continue to look at data, we always do, but I always caution in implementing new, that like you're not going to see leaps and bounds in one year because everybody in the system's learning, including parents, right? The communication piece that Angie asked about, we're going to communicate to parents, we have a new resource. This is what it might look like at home for a first grader, this is what might, might look at home for an eighth grader and how you can support as a parent. That's going to be a little bit different than when you were bringing home units of study, which is quite different with how a parent engages with those. So, complex answer, I know you wish it was easier. It's not, but that's the truth to how implementation goes.
In the end, I think it's reading, right? We all know what reading is, we do it, we know what good reading is, or so, are we going to get there? Or how are we going to get there differently?
Over, so second grade, I feel like I had, I had Angie's.
You had Evy.
Yeah, way back in the day too. And I remember even questions I'm going, talking about phonics and phonemic awareness. And she was a great reader, but there was still.
She still doesn't have good phonemic awareness.
Those pieces that you look back and like, oh, if I would have known better. And with the letters training that we've gone through, I've definitely made some changes in my second-grade classroom where phonics is really important, where they get to get those vowel teams and some unusual things. So although I didn't pilot this one, I piloted the other one and immediately stopped using it because I did not like it. But with some other learning that I know this resource has, we have seen some great growth in even that phonics piece. I even had a kid who gets special ed support today, we were doing some blending and decoding, and the word was B-O, bow, and they were reading it. And I said, how'd you know that was going to be bow and not boo or bah? And he raised his hand, and he was so excited, and he goes, Mrs. Peters, Mrs. Peters, that, that's a closed, or that's an open syllable. So open syllables end in a vowel, and it's going to say the long O sound. And if you would have asked any of my kids previous years, that is not something they would have known. They get to a word like live, and they'll go, oh, that has to have an E at the end because no English word can end in a V. And these kinds of things that we're learning as teachers and that are in this resource are giving them that really strong backward, background knowledge of like, oh, D G E. I had taught a group about how, when do I know if it's a C or a K? What vowel needs to come after it? Oh, there's an E, so it's going to make the J sound, not the G sound. And like all of these things that are going to, that can carry through any reading level, that they're getting much stronger, that I never taught that before, nor could any of my kids have regurgitated those kinds of rules in our previous resource. So that's not like hardened, fast data for, in less than a year, for kids to be able to come up with that kind of stuff with just more explicit, more direct teaching with what they need is so powerful.
I too am curious, a year from now, three years from now, I've been in the district for a while. I've been here the entire time units of study has been implemented. I've taught first grade, this is my ninth year in the district teaching first grade, so my whole time here has been in early literacy. I have worked with students for years going, gosh, I'm doing all these things, and they're just not making growth. Since working in science of reading, and I too did not pilot my view, I piloted the other, and I fully support the adoption of my view. But with everything that I have learned through this team, the letters training, I can already say, like I might not have hardened data, but day-to-day of what my students and I have a range of abilities in my room, students with IEPs, students who are probably reaching more into that second-grade standard, to students who Denise works with. I, and I am seeing so much more phonemic awareness. My kids are reading books that they would not have been reading under units of study. I am excited to teach each day this, I'm excited to see, and I've had parents feedback going, I'm seeing a different reader at home. I am seeing so much more because it's all grounded in science of reading. And it's just making a huge difference. Yes, I don't have hardened data, but day-to-day, I'm supporting. And I don't currently have students who are necessarily being flagged for EMLSS. I've had that every year otherwise.
Thank you for sharing that.
I just wanted to share one more quick thing too, as the ESL teacher, we focus on grammar, teaching grammar a lot. And never ever before this year, when we piloted and had a few classes piloting, have I heard, oh, I already know this rule, when I tried to teach something. They learned the plural S, ES versus S rule, they learned, they learned the soft C versus hard C rule. Like they learn all these rules as a whole group, which I have never witnessed myself in the classroom. So literally, I am planning on teaching something, and the kids are like, we already know this rule. And I'm like, oh, let's just do something else then. And we, we do letter tiles where they physically build words that are also provided through Savas, that are provided through the letters training. And we have tried it all, it is hands-on, and the kids just love it. They really look forward to learning directly the rules of the English language, which makes, which makes them better readers, so, and writers. So just as a side note.
All right, thank you, everyone.
I can just add really quickly to the data aspect. I did pilot Savas, and I'm in first grade. I have way more data points to help my kids than I ever did when I piloted because they give so many options. There are almost so many options that we had to sit down and take time to really see like, what is all here? Like this is awesome, but things we were trying to find on our own, we didn't have to do that. We had cold reading passages. You get to the end of a unit, you have an assessment there that directly correlates to what you've been teaching. We never had that, all we had was running records, and then whatever we dug up on the side. This breaks down everything from listening comprehension to reading comprehension to the high-frequency words that we were using. I mean, the, the range of assessing is almost overwhelming, where you have to sit down and, and figure out what works best. But it allowed us to all be on the same page. So my teaching partner wasn't using a different assessment to get to a data point than I was. We were able to bring things to our PLCs and say like, oh, you're struggling with this, let's look through. What assessments does this curriculum offer that could give us more information about this child? And so we actually found the data aspect to be more powerful in the first-grade world. So that speaks a little bit to at least how we can use data better to track our kids moving forward.
I'm so, I'm so excited for you all.
Thank you, everyone. All right, we'll move on to the technology report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all for being here this evening and so late.
Ms. Zelinski, please.
All right, good evening, everyone. Tonight I have to share with you our annual technology update. And with that, I will, as you saw on the agenda, also share our five-year technology plan with you as well tonight. So just as a kind of a background that I share each year is that technology oversees both, I call the operation side of the district as well as the instructional side. And with that, can be a kind of a big picture view of that on the technology plan. There was kind of that spider web graphic that was maybe difficult to read. But I thought it might be helpful just to kind of share a little bit of some numbers and some background as relates to the types of things that the technology department oversees. So we have over 6,100 user accounts that we oversee and manage, over 6,400 devices, over 300 TVs and displays in classrooms, over 550 wireless access points that give us our connectivity, over 200 software applications and apps that are being used across the district, 15, 50-plus different data integrations. So think about pulling data from Power School into other systems so that kids don't have to remember logins across multiple systems. We've had a one-to-one district since 2014. And like I said, we support, and we also have that expendable, our own district-owned fiber that we've shared before, how that has saved us money over time to have invested in that infrastructure, as well as our connection to the local organization weekend that gives us connectivity to other districts and other municipalities to share some of those resources. And all of that kind of builds our connections for those operations and instructional technology. All of that with four IT people besides myself who are managing all of those systems and, and technologies. So as we think about our plan and, and what that looks like, and when you see some of those numbers, as we are going to talk a little bit later too, as we talk about the capital improvement plans, that's kind of where those numbers all fit, when you think about all those different systems and technologies that we are supporting. With that, we have to have a flexible infrastructure. There's a lot of different unique needs, both instructionally and operationally, as you just heard. And we also have to have uptime and stability because those are the things that we're dependent on every day. And if a Wi-Fi access point goes down, or the internet goes down, we hear about it. And people don't know what to do, as you would probably find the same thing in your current, make places of employment or even at home when the power was out for multiple days, what do you do? So with that, this year, as we've been talking about the coherence plan, the upcoming coherence plan, technology plan will be a component in that. And within that, we've identified some key strategies in that next coherence plan as it relates to fiscal stewardship. And some of that revolves around how we procure software and hardware to support those learning and operations. We also, to keep that uptime and reliability, try to stay as close as we can to like that five-year replacement cycle so that we have current technologies. We do know, especially with like our laptops and our Chromebooks and such, year one and two are great. Years three and four, we have more problems, our batteries start to, you know, die, and some of those things. And year five, there's usually significantly more support. So trying to keep that replacement cycle is important for us to have that constant reliability that we're looking for both operationally and instructionally. And then the other thing, I think there's a key strategy, is my job of also taking a look and meeting with a lot of vendors and looking at those product roadmaps. I'm always amazed every time I meet with a vendor, just met with a HP laptop vendor recently. And it's just amazing to me when there's multiple different levels of machines, multiple different levels of systems. And, you know, you have to kind of weigh through that, and then they're going to stop manufacturing it in this year, and then we're going to start doing this this year. And so how can we leverage that information to make better decisions, to kind of find that better price point, to kind of figure out what's going to last us those four or five years, knowing that we want to have that longevity in some of our tools and the equipment? So related to that, the other couple of things, as we talk about fiscal responsibility, included in the, in the report, information related to E-Rate. E-Rate is a federal program that gives us some discount, 40% off of certain infrastructure types of equipment. So 40% off our internet service. And then I believe they're going to renew at the next five-year window. So there's been a five-year window over the last five years where we were able to use it for certain things that are the infrastructure parts of it, so our Wi-Fi, our switches, some of the cabling, and some of those internal components that people don't really see behind the scenes. But it's also, as you look at the five-year budget plan, that's also probably the most expensive part of keeping our systems up and running. So to be able to get that 40% back has been helpful. So over the last five years, through that process, we've gotten back about just over $500,000 to cover some of those expenses that are major to our systems working. Similar to that, again, always looking for ways to improve things or save dollars. Last time we did our switch replacements, we took a look at, how can we reduce the number of switches in all of our closets? We didn't need necessarily every data place in the system active, so to speak, live in the current. And how many of those are currently active, what can we take a look at? So as we've become dependent more on Wi-Fi, we needed less of those physical connections and such so that we were able to reduce some of that equipment by 56% just by doing an analysis of what we are currently actually needed, with some room for growth. Because, good thing we did, because as we added more video cameras and more other things that all have to get plugged into those same pieces of equipment, we still had space available to be able to add and expand in some of those areas. And then lastly, I just share a few minute things around some highlights from this year in terms of some things that we've done. Couple of things, one was we replaced all of our projection units in the classroom at the elementary level that were probably in that seven to eight-year range old, to put TVs in like we had at the middle and high school. We did select a different product, which I'm excited about as it has some additional functionality and features than just a traditional, say, TV or a traditional display. So from those devices, teachers can take from their, their device and, or sorry. So from those devices, teachers can take from their their device and uh, or sorry, from the TV and push it out to the student Chromebooks. The student Chromebooks can push that whatever's on their screen and share like student work back to the TV. So there's just some functionality there that um, the TVs actually have an Android operating system on them. So there's apps and kind of like your smart TVs at home. Think about some of the things that they can add and do there, um, including some interactive whiteboarding and some other tools and applications that teachers are using. So. Uh, I think that was a a good investment and at the kindergarten level, those are also touchscreens. So the little ones can go up and touch and interact. It's similar to what we used to have with a smart board, uh, but with all that other additional functionality. We did some updates to the computer science lab of as we have a new instructor, but also curriculum being the same. Um, there was just some needs there that wasn't really meeting the needs of our learners there. So minor things, but. Like two screens so they can see their programming happening on one screen and the results of it on another screen. So they can kind of see that interactivity as they were coding. Different pieces. So just a couple of little minor things like that that uh, helped improve our computer science programming. Network security is always a top of mind as you've seen phishing and spams and. It's in the news and I think there was just something in the news again, who just got hit. I think um, did I hear Epic got hit today or something? Yeah. So. As you think about some of those pieces, we've spent some time this year educating our teachers, um, doing some um. Fake phishing attempts for lack of a way to look at click rates to see what our risk vectors are, how can and then educating them in the moment if there was things that. Maybe they clicked on that they shouldn't have um, in a safe plight way so that we could use that as a training opportunity. And help everybody just become uh, more aware and raise that awareness level as those things come into our system. To, as I always say, hopefully never under my watch that will ever have to be in a situation where something has been compromised. And lastly, just just share a little bit about our end-user support. Like I said, there's four. People in my department who do all the day-to-day support for all the systems, but also are all of our end-users. We have a help desk ticketing system that um, people can submit questions or it's not just break and fix things, but anything that they might need support with. So to date, we've um, they have managed over three thousand help desk tickets of which a majority of them, not a majority, of heart, large number of them would be Chromebooks. Primarily because of um, just the nature of what we do with students who have Chromebooks who take them home and things happen, right? And so um, great learning tool, but also some additional support with some of those pieces. So. That gives a little bit of an overview of some just some of the highlights, I guess, from this past year and I'll open it up to any questions about either the plan or projects that we've worked on this year.
Linda, please.
I just need to understand what you mean by um, computer labs because everybody has a computer. So why are we still have these labs?
Yes. So we have some curricular areas that need some unique software that will not run on our Chromebook. So thinking about CAD and CAM software. So in our Project Lead the Way classrooms at the high school, uh, AutoCAD is the software used to design and build and manufacture items. And that software um, is actual application that has to be installed on a uh, com- uh, computer. Other areas, we have some unique video editing software in our video production classrooms. So across the district, uh, we have some science prober still in our science classrooms. So there's different. Unique software applications specific to content areas that um, would not function.
That helps give me an idea what that looks like.
Yeah.
Um, also your your five-year plan, I mean, your cost, there's software. I mean, software is what makes the world go round, right? So where are the software costs in any of this? Or is it all Google-free?
Um, it's not all Google-free. Um, and even Google is not always free anymore. So. Software costs are not in here. This fiber plan was the hardware replacement cycle specifically related to and and we're going to talk a little bit about Fund Forty-Six and the and the capital improvement. So this was the that hardware piece only. This isn't my entire budget. Um, this was the hardware piece specifically. Software costs are very minimal because um, let's just say minimal, that's that's not true. So some of the software costs we still have are some of our licensing for our applications like if we still like Microsoft Office. Actually, Google has a fee now that we're paying for some of those pieces. Plus some of these educational software that I just mentioned. Um, there's a cost for that. Some of that lives in my budget. Some of it lives in curriculum instruction. Depending on um, the purpose of it. So my budget covers more of those global things that every user needs or needs access to. Whereas teaching and learning covers some of those more curriculum-specific applications. And then every department, business services, um, or HR has some, you know, specific to HR and some of those things as well. So. When we say software, it's really in a lot of different budgets because of whoever owns kind of that responsibility for those tools and applications to operate our business. Our district.
Thank you. Um, you mentioned that you do have customer service feedback survey data. What is that telling you how you're doing?
Yes. So this started a few years ago as one of our goals as a as a team to make sure that we are responding to. Those help desk tickets in a timely manner as well as feedback from our users. So at after somebody submits a help desk ticket, they get an automatically generated email, just like you can take a survey. And they can choose to respond back to us. Was it timely? Was your technician friendly? Did you get your problem solved? Those types of things.
So how you doing?
Yeah, um, I didn't pull those numbers this year specifically. I the last time I. As I've looked at them, they've been pretty steady. So I've been looked at them reason recently. I would say pretty steadily. We're at like an eighty-five, ninety percent positive return rate.
Thank you. And and I want to understand the uh, the E-rate money. So is that a reimbursement or is it, do we budget for it or?
So I can answer that particular question. It is a revenue falls in the nine hundred category if you look at the revenues and we budget for that. So. Based on what Luann has in the technology budget, we take a look at what we think will be re- uh, E-rate reimbursable and we put that in at the rate. So some are fifty percent, some are less depending on um, school districts. So rural school districts typically have everything at fifty percent. We have some at fifty percent, but because we're more suburban, some of our reimbursements are a little bit lower than that. So we take that into account. And we budget for that at the beginning of the year um, as just part of the general budgeting process.
So we buy it and then submit for reimbursement? Because it's a discounted rate.
Yeah. So the process is um, I work with somebody in in Andy's department. I have to identify which I te- technologies we're going to be purchasing this year that would be eligible. It goes into a system, it goes out to bids and different, any vendor could potentially put, you know, put a bid in on it. We select the vendor for through a criteria process. We buy the items and then, yeah, we get reimbursed um, that whatever portion is eligible. But there has to be a process. We have to go through that process to get that money back. We can't just assume, turn a receipt in after the fact, so to speak.
So does that cost certain through the state? That's some sort of?
It's a federal government. It's run through USAC, United States. I don't even know what the AC stands for, but. It's a series of forms you fill out that start like this is what I want to do is Form One. They okay that. Then Form Two is. What are the specific items you're actually going to purchase? Then it goes into another form and that's kind of the bidding form. Then you have to select the bidder from that. It's tedious, I'm not going to lie, but again, at fifty percent reimbursement on something that might cost.
Reasonably certain of what.
Five hundred thousand dollars.
What the rate's going to be.
The rates, the rates are set. Those aren't. There's not a some certain or a some sufficient. It's a rate that's set.
It's five hundred thousand every year.
Nope, that was five hundred thousand. That was an example. Over the last five years, we've had five hundred thousand dollars back.
Over five years.
Correct.
On average, a hundred thousand?
On average, yep.
Hundred thousand each year. Can I ask one more?
Please.
Uh, you mentioned that you, you know, you look ahead. So it's a, just like you heard curriculum, you're three years out looking at software. So what exciting things are you seeing out there that we might be coming our way?
Yeah, maybe not software, but I'm going to say AI. You know, AI is really hot. We're working on some of a team, small team that's starting to look at. Identifying some staff guidelines for AI, student use for AI. I see AI as being something in education that's going to be almost probably as significant as when the internet started. There's just so much, every application, every software, every piece of hardware even, as I was, like I said, I was looking at some hardware replacements and. They were talking about how they're building AI, Microsoft's requiring it into some of the hardware being purchased and so forth. So. I think AI is going to be our artificial intelligence. Um, if you haven't played with ChatGPT or Bard from by Google or. You see now, I think on my phone lately, I've been, there's been, hey, reach AI on my Instagram account, you know, like just different things. You're just seeing it all over. And so. Similar to like when the internet started, I think it's, we have to start teaching teachers about, kids are using it. Let's be honest, like write a report on this. They're going to. Put AI writing a report on XYZ. So it's already out there being used um, by students. We know that. So how can we leverage. Our teaching skills and our human skills and what are we asking of kids? Um, many districts are starting to put in some guidelines like. Teachers need to have direct in their directions. It's okay to use AI for this or for this aspect, but it's not okay to use it for that or it's not okay to use AI at all. It has to be all your own words. Some of those things that we're going to be facing in education, I think it's going to be a huge.
I think there were some sessions at the at the conference that talked about that. Even teachers can use it to initial read of a student's work and offer.
Yes, yep, and we. Yeah, and one of our coaches at the high school has been working really closely with a couple of English teachers on that specifically, found a tool. Took our rubric, took our scores to try to give students some initial feedback to help them with their writing during the writing process. And then ultimately the teacher obviously was doing the real final assessment, but it helped grow the writer sooner or faster feedback. But it took, it was pretty tedious to make sure that the rubric and the feedback and the AI information. Really was what we were looking for to meet our standards and all those things that we've talked about tonight. So. But there's some exciting potential tools out there that can help with some of those pieces.
And you're working on that right now?
We're working right now on some, we did some PD sessions during our gear ups around it, some in an introduction to AI for some of our teaching staff. That's where we started this year. We've identified some guidelines for staff about how to use it in the classroom with students. And now we're in the process of working on some student guidelines about what is it we want students to know as we think about those information and technology literacy skills. And I, we heard with the ELA resource even about the difference between a dot gov and a dot com and and some of those things. So the same kind of literacy skills as it relates to AI. What is it that we want students to know about using AI in their learning? Obviously, it's still new. It's going to change. Um, but trying to build some of those basic things and what we're kind of discovering and learning. It's probably really not much different than any other literacy skills is how do they know the information is valid? What's the original source of that information and some of those pieces? But I, we think there's some really valuable things that they could use it for to get some general ideas and some other things versus like having it do it for them, so to speak. And that would not be our goal.
Really one last question.
Please.
So what about these things? You don't, nobody, I mean, phones are a big part of our lives, but it's not anywhere. In any of this technology plan because what, we all have them. We just, can you bring them in or I know you have kids in school, so you know.
I don't think that's Luann's department to just determine whether kids can bring phones into the classroom.
Well, it's not part of technology then.
Students are, I have, students can bring their classrooms to schools. Um, we prefer that some cases that they keep them in their lockers depending on it. Some, I know classrooms have holders for them to drop them into the holder so that.
Cell hotel.
Was that? The cell hotel. There we go. So that again, yeah, not something we're directly connecting into our plans and and using uh, all those students are.
School apps that they should have on their phones?
Well, we're certainly not buy, we're certainly not funding them.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I appreciate the flexibility of um, the idea of moving some of these uh, things through Fund Forty-Six. And making more flexible um, the efficiencies of of um, of paying for some of this stuff, but I know you're going to discuss that with the capital improvement plan. So. I'll wait for that, but I appreciate that. That's happening as well. Anybody else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Buildings and grounds report. Mr. Daniels, please.
Good evening. So tonight I'm going to take you through the buildings and grounds report. Um, we're going to touch on. Some of the facility project or all the facility projects that were done in the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Then we'll touch on facility projects that we are going to plan, that we're planning on doing in the upcoming fiscal year. Then move to annual maintenance projects. I always like to update on that so everybody's aware of some of the things that we do to extend our systems. Just a quick update on the HVAC tech, um, buildings and grounds teamwork, and then we'll finish with energy. But to the next slide, um, I know you have all seen this, but I just want to kind of talk about a few of these items. It's no surprise the the things that we've talked about in Franklin Ford are showing up in all of these plans, right? Roofing and. Asphalt, electrical systems, plumbing systems. So we did a lot of that this year. I'm not going to go through each of those, but I do want to just clear up because this is a newer. Document that we've created, um, but just want to make sure like CIP is understood. That's capital improvement plan or pro- you know, um, projects. Fund Forty-Six you'll hear about a little bit later and then OPS, Ops is for my operations budget. Um, I wouldn't be surprised if anybody had questions like how is operations fitting into some of these facility projects? Well, sometimes our facility projects start with reactive maintenance and then snowball into a bigger project. And then we have to replace that system. So I wanted to capture that year over year. Um, so something like the the pools being the the tiles in the pool being repaired and. The the gym over at Robinwood, the lighting system was so old and antiquated, we ended up having to move forward with an LED project there. Something we would normally have done with a capital in the capital plan, but we had to do it much sooner and uh, more as a reactionary piece. And then I think it's, everybody should know the acronyms for the schools, um, but DW stands for district-wide. So. If something is be, some project is being done district-wide and touching all the schools, I labeled that as DW. I can take questions on that later on, but again, it's everything that we've heard us talk about.
Just a quick clarification.
Yeah.
So the where's the KIP plan live? I know Forty-Six is over here, but where does KIP?
The CIP plan?
Yeah, where's that live?
So you'll hear about that later. Can we address that later? So there's a whole other document for that. So we have the facility study and to be honest with you, Linda, what you're seeing here is a snapshot of that that plan. So this is, what you'll learn later is that that CIP plan starts in the current year. But the real ten years is going to start in the next fiscal year and you'll see that later. Does that help you?
I'm just more concerned, where where's the funding coming from? Is it coming from?
Yeah.
Where in the budget?
I say we save that for.
Okay, it's not Fund Forty-Six. It's something in the general fund.
Yeah, so the CIP, oh, I'm so sorry. So the CIP, um, as I think most of us know, we do put one point two six million for the CIP projects. Is that, that probably answers your question, correct? I can answer that. So one point two six million dollars is budgeted out of our operational budget. It is budgeted as a single line item of transferring those dollars to Fund Forty-Six. The actual physical purchases, purchase orders, those are made out of Fund Forty-Six using those dollars. Again, that transition over the last year is so that we avoid the June thirtieth deadline of Andy having to have a roof replaced. At Robinwood and they can't finish by June thirtieth and now we're crossing two fiscal years. There's accounting issues that deal with that. Fund Forty-Six doesn't care about that. Fund Forty-Six simply cares when the project is finished and paid for and that's when it's accounted for. So all of the projects of the one point two six million in twenty-three, twenty-four. Were paid for technically using Fund Forty-Six, but with a transfer of dollars from Fund Ten. So we're still op- budgeting for it out of operational dollars.
So it says Forty-Six and KIP. So KIP is in the general fund to be transferred to Forty-Six?
So CIP projects are budgeted for in our operational budget and transferred over. Where it says Fund Forty-Six, that's existing dollars that have been in Fund Forty-Six since whenever it was started or accumulated over time. So we're man- Andy's managing to keep CIP projects listed as CIP so that we're aware that we're budgeting that as part of our one point two six million dollars. Four and Forty-Six is over and above that. Operational is over and above that too on capital improvement projects. So you'll notice at the bottom right, it's two point three five million dollars, even though for capital improvements, we still only budgeted one point two six million dollars last year.
Thank you. That helps.
So on the next slide is the projects that we are going to be tackling starting in July one. So for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Anything that's kind of a, all zeros, those numbers are still coming in, um, or being adjusted based on other design work that we're doing. But again, nothing different than what we've talked about um, with all of our facilities. We're tackling roofs, plumbing, the pool. Failing concrete and mechanicals. Um, and as you can see, that we were right around one point two six million right now. And then the next slide goes through our annual maintenance projects. Um, so I think it's just always important, especially for a community to know that. Obviously, we're not reactionary, right? We do have um, PMs in place. Um, and this is a list of those and those will probably grow over time. For example, we did not have a remit, a radio communication system maintenance program in place. We didn't have a PA system maintenance program in place. Um, so there's a few that I've added since last year that I feel like we will extend some of those systems as well. And also create efficiencies and also ensure that some of these systems will not fail during the school day and then kind of put us in a tailspin. But I think most of you are aware of a lot of this work that's happening. Some of it was already being done by previous buildings and grounds directors. And we're going to continue to do their work and add to that as well. Um, next slide. So as you know, um, last year we did approve the HVAC tech position. Um, just to be clear, that that did not create a budget impact for us. Just to be clear, that, that did not create a budget impact for us. We simply took funds out of the, the buildings and grounds operations budget and transferred those into salaries and benefits. That service agreement with our mechanical contractor was right around two oh five to two ten, plus there was some other preventative maintenance work that was not being done that would have drove that up, so we calculated that in year one, if we brought that in-house where that tech was solely focused on the preventative maintenance, we would have a calculated savings of about ten thousand to twenty-five thousand. A little hard to quantify, but we knew that we had to acquire tools and a vehicle and things like that. But then in preceding years, we would be a calculated savings of seventy-five thousand. What's important to understand is again, that was just focused on the preventative service agreement that we then terminated with that mechanical contractor, but we also knew that we were going to have some cost avoidance with reactive maintenance if the HVAC tech had the time to, to tackle some of that. So to the next slide, he was able to do that. So we immediately set up a slot, excuse me, a sheet that could compare the labor costs and additional charges that we would have been charged through a mechanical contractor, compared that to a, a rate of pay for the HVAC tech. And then we also know that there was upcharge on, on parts that we would be purch, or that would be purchased through that mechanical contractor versus, we would be avoiding those versus the HVAC tech purchasing those on his own. We also took into account that we would get charged mileage or transporta, or hours for transportation over to the site. So we accounted for all that, and within five months, we identified a cost avoidance. By Ed doing some of the stuff on his own, we avoided thirty-five thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars. I wanna point out too that the HVAC tech is multi-talented. He's got all their experience and skills. So a good example that, some cost avoidance that we really can't quantify, but it was, it helped us out. But Heidi, our auxiliary services coordinator that oversees transportation, recognized that we didn't have two-way radio tran, or two-way radio communication in our buses, so drivers would literally have to pull over and try to use their phone and things like that, right? So she researched some two-way radio communication systems and purchased, selected one, but now they need it to be installed in the buses. And we would have likely had to send out to like Hiller Ford or Holtz. We don't know what that would have costed, but Ed was able to do that work. So if we would have sent those buses out, they would have been out of service until that got done. And as we know, sometimes you're waiting two weeks, you might drop it off and you're waiting to see when it gets done. He was able to work his schedule and the busing schedule to complete that work. So that's a big win for us and the district and the budget. So that's, that's working out quite well. Next slide. I just wanna recognize the buildings and grounds team. So Luanne talked about it earlier. We use the same system. I never heard a Sherpa desk before I got here. I used a couple other high-end work order management systems that are very expensive. This is very, very affordable. It is very simple, and I love it. It was already implemented before I got here, but we kind of looked at what else can we use this for? So I started to put in preventative maintenance tasks for our custo, or our buildings and grounds team in there, so they're doing things like roof, roof inspections. They, I think it came up this month where they gotta go around and take a look at their concrete and asphalt to give me feedback, flags, quarterly flag inspections. So it's being used more to its potential, but we're not done, okay? So as you can see here, and actually the next slide really shows what the dashboard would look like. But from May first, two thousand twenty-two to May first, two thousand twenty-three, they had completed seven hundred and sixty-five work orders with an average completion time of fourteen days. Within the last year, May first to May, May first twenty-three to May first twenty-four, we now completed two thousand three hundred and seventeen and almost shaved off half of our time for completion rates. Our goal really will be, once I really fully implement this, probably hitting three thousand, and I'd like to get that down to the five-day mark. There's just some reasons we can't always complete everything, like waiting on parts and things like that, so. That's a big win and that, all, all that needs to go back and, you know, really recognize our buildings and grounds team, so. The la, what I'll wrap up with is utilities and energy. Through Franklin Forward, we heard a lot of questions about how, what, what would be our plans, what would we consider for some of the new technology out there, and then some board members even asked some of those questions. So wanted to just talk about that, kind of let you know where I'm at, and we will always consider those things. But the big ones are photovoltaic cells, which is solar, geothermal. Those are a lot that are being implemented in like Madison area schools. Oregon school district built a new building and added those things in. But they got a lot of subsidies for doing those, and there's a lot of incentives, so that's great. But I'd rather sit back, if we get that opportunity to really start designing something, or we go through a renovation, or whatever it is, maybe there's some additional funding that we just can't pass up, that's when I would really start considering those and really working with the engineers and reaching out to my sources at these school districts, because I don't wanna do something based on assumptions, I wanna do it based on facts. So I wanna use them as case studies to see that they're really getting what they are. So Oregon right now, their building is net zero. We'll see where they're at in five years, okay? But then there's a district to the southwest of us that they put in geothermals like twenty years ago. And over the time of that system, and by the time they accrued all the maintenance costs and they needed to replace it, they ended up going back to a traditional heating and cooling system. Technology's come a long way in twenty years, so I would like to see that, that it's probably better. But that's what I would, that's how I would approach it. However, I would also recognize that there's a lot of education behind that, that we could take advantage by having some of those systems. So like Maguana Go has a solar, solar panels now in their district, and they worked that into some curriculum, showing the kids how that works. And then some of the new buildings in the Madison area, they actually, you can physically see these systems and you can teach kids about those systems. So that's exciting as well, but I do worry that when it comes time to replace those systems, will we be subsidized to really make it worth our bank for our buck, okay? But I also listed on here the HVAC components where we can put in frequency drives and CO2 sensors. LED projects are still good, even though the paybacks for LED projects in our district at this point are starting to get pushed back a little bit because some of the lighting components that we have are so old and antiquated that we can no longer retrofit them. Now we have to move to full replacement, which pushes back those, those paybacks. But there's still really good incentives on that. I don't remember what it was. I should have put it in the slide, but the LED projects that we did complete this year, I think we got twenty-eight thousand dollars back from Focus on Energy on those. So we'll always consider those. Moving to really the energy update, so I, this is something I started tracking when I joined the district. I'm using two thousand twenty-two as my benchmark year. As we continue to do good things, I might change that benchmark year to a very successful year. But you can see here on this slide that we did see an increase in costs in our utilities by twenty-one thousand. Now that includes gas, electric and water. Water is the one that took a big hit on us. I'm still investigating why that happened, but I believe it was the pool. And electric rates. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see that we did reduce our gas consumption significantly, where we saw a significant decrease in gas costs. And then we did see a decrease in electrical consumption. But the cost rose, so we still saw an increase there, and then the water is the anomaly, and hopefully it is an anomaly, but we are losing still about four thousand gallons in the pool on a daily basis, depending upon the temperatures that we run it at. And we're gonna be dumping two hundred and nine thousand gallons out of it soon, you know, to do some of those repairs, so. But I'm not done investigating that, but we do have energy guidelines in the district that were shared last year. And I, so I contribute a lot of the savings, the, the reduction in kilowatt consumption and the reduction in thermes for gas. I do contribute that to a somewhat mild winter. Our energy guidelines, which has our buildings and grounds team, which is another preventative maintenance task, by the way. But weekly, they have to go in and look at their calendar of events and then program their HVAC equipment accordingly. And then our LED projects helped, some other energy efficient proj, projects helped as well. So with that, on the next slide, I know my pictures aren't as fun as Countrydale's, but working clockwise up in the top left with some concrete worked on at the high school. Our wonderful plumbing situation at Pleasant View, we tackled some of that over the spring break. Plumbing at Southway Glen and some roofing at the high school. So I know that was a lot. I would be happy to take any questions.
Please, Andrew.
My just a comment. I just appreciate your enthusiasm for anything that you tackle. Thanks.
Yeah, a lot more. And I'm happy to do it. I love it, so.
No, I think it was a good decision on our part for you to ask to recommend the HVAC technician. And I see that, you know, it was a good decision paying off, you know, kind of, and I'm hoping that, you know, this kind of, you know, strategies help the district, you know, more money and be able to connect and hopefully relate to the constituents as such. Thank you for what you're doing. Thank you.
You're welcome. With regard to the HVAC is, I know when we started, when we talked about HVAC, there was a, there was a suggestion that maybe that would lead to further hiring electrician or, or that sort of thing. I'm not saying we should do it or don't. I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on it after, after, it's only six months, I guess.
So the HVAC was very easy to quantify. I mean, that was a slam dunk. We were paying two hundred, over two hundred thousand dollars and still wasn't, we're not even doing the plan that I would have wanted to have in place. So that was easy. The electrician side of it is not as easy. Still trying to quantify that, so I am tracking the electrical projects that we have done. Some of those I would not have expected an in-house electrician to do, and some of it I would have. And then also looking at some of our other things that an electrician can do that maybe we're not doing. Like we could literally set up preventative maintenance tasks such as checking every outlet and every light switch and things like that, right? So I'm trying to quantify it still. I really don't think we're that far off though, especially if, and I'm throwing this out there, there was no discussions of this at all. But perhaps using some of that seventy-five thousand that we would anticipate saving with the move to HVAC technician, I don't think we're that far from possibly adding an electrician, but I just need a little bit more time to quantify that, so.
Linda, please.
Quick question on your graphs for utilities?
Yeah.
Are those dollars or?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll take a little time here.
Cause I look at the side, it looks like it's.
Yeah, so on the left, okay, so if we start on the far left, that's the gas data in yellow. So on the left, so the vertical line is the thermes used, okay? So the height of the graph is based on thermes used. At the bottom is actually the dollars spent. And that, that follows all the way across with the electrical and water.
Never seen it like that before. Thank you.
Anything else?
I, so I know that in the first, in the first slide we looked at, we used, we have, we, we budget one point two six million, and we used money from, yeah, money from Fund forty-six of, of close to a million dollars, uh, over a million dollars. How long can we sustain that?
We won't be able to sustain that. We wouldn't be able to sustain that for five years. Some of this was some big things that we wanted to do right off the jump. So the LED lighting, using it for that has operational savings long-term. So we knew, like, that was a wise decision that we needed to do. The smart board TVs, which is line six, that was actually in place before I even arrived in, in, in process. This, it was a two-year process though to finish, so that was finished in the summer of last year, so. That was kind of already earmarked. You'll see a couple of other things like updating the PA system. Like if we don't do that, that's a serious safety issue. We were not even aware that it had an issue till we tried to operate it and it didn't operate. So in a couple of locations, we had to do repairs to that. We kind of look at that as that's something that needs to happen right away. Line number twelve, the proximity access system, that was something that we had talked about internally when I first came on board. Andy had some better knowledge of the systems in general or contractors or what to do with that. But it really is a safety issue and provides us immediate access to lockdown buildings, like right here now from swipe cards, whatever have you. It's al, also gives us the ability to provide our law enforcement with a single swipe card that gets into every building rather than having to fumble for keys that might work at this building, but not that building. So there are some security aspects to that. But sustain about a million dollars a year, not for a long period of time. But Andy and I have conversations about Fund forty-six, probably monthly, specifically Fund forty-six monthly, and what the plan is for future years. If we do have dollars at the end of the year, the plan is to continue to move some of those dollars to Fund forty-six to help things that come up that aren't on the list or maybe are on the list, but they get shoved up to this year versus two years down the road because something doesn't work anymore. Whatever have you, damage happened and now it's, it's now become a high priority.
And I, I, I hope that didn't sound like.
No.
I hope my question didn't sound like I was finding fault with us spending that much money. I just.
Yeah, no, not at all.
It's a situation, right, where we, we.
And, and I just.
And we're addressing those things going forward.
Well, I'll tell you, like, I appreciate working with Andy on some of these. So like, he brought up the PAs, like, how can we not have a full functioning PA for security and safety, right? How can we not have teachers having a clock system that coordinates with bells, right? So those are some of the things we found in the middle of the year, and it's like, so I went to Andy and, you know, we talked through it. Figured, well, how can we, you know, move some money around if it was in my operations budget, which it wasn't, and that's the direction we went. So I don't, I'm hoping as, we fixed a lot of things this year. My, I'm hoping that it's not gonna continue that way. But like, I mean, literally today.
Pleasant View situation was a, was a.
We, we had a scare at Ben Franklin. You know, power went out last night, HVAC system wouldn't come on. We were lucky that, again, we maintained that relation, relationship with the mechanical contractor that we terminated that PM agreement with. We still have a good relationship. They stored parts on their shelves for us and was able to get a very old, you know, original building automation system functioning today at Ben Franklin where I was sweating a little bit, so. But now that will change things, which I'll talk about in our ten-year plan, actually.
Linda, please.
Well, I wanna be clear though, Fund forty-six does have budget controls on it, correct? I mean, the board approves expenditures in that budget, in that fund, or not?
So that's actually the next bullet point.
Yeah.
The next, the next presentation.
Next agenda item.
Capital improvement projects. Okay, you ready? You just said capital improvement projects, and those are the ones that are in the general fund. Now we're gonna talk to Fund forty-six. Let's move on. Move on. Fund forty-six, got it.
Anything else related to the buildings and grounds annual report?
No, thank you for all your hard work. I feel like we're getting more efficiencies and moving forward.
And I'm gonna stay up here. I think Luanne's gonna join me?
Yes, we'll move on with the capital improvement ten-year plan. Ms. Zelinski, please.
Mr. Cromie. Just firing it up here.
Sure.
Uh, the facility study piece, yes.
Okay, so why is it important to have a facility study? Obviously, there was a lot of studies done in the district, but as we all know, we, we did this very comprehensive study with Plunkett Rayish and C.D. Smith last year, but this kind of tells you the why, you know, and it's, you don't just rely on that one-time study. We have to keep going back and taking a look at anything new. Do, continue to do assessments, because we're gonna always probably find new issues, new things that we gotta keep on our radar. So annually, you know, that's what I'm tasked to do, and I look forward to doing that. But we need to look for those other areas of, you know, all these other deficiencies. How can we all continue to be more energy efficient? Enhancing the learning environment, not making it undesirable, things like that. So when we did that last summer, everybody's aware, that was a Franklin Forward conversations, but we did over, we did identify over ninety-six million dollars worth of projects. This was used to develop the CIP plan, the capital improvement plan. So that had to really happen first for me to then develop the ten-year plan. So the next slide really just kind of shows you, this is a screenshot, the actual facility study, all the board had it previously. I linked it there anyway. As we know, each building has its own separate tab within the study, but then this is like an overall, overall quick, very high-level look at that facility study. But then going on to the next slide, we developed that capital plan, right? And this is the segue into a Fund forty-six and the requirements we need to operate a Fund forty-six. But this is important. This isn't just schools. This is hospitals and manufacturing. They should all have a plan like this, because what does it do? It helps us be, anticipate those problems rather than react, react to issues in the moment. It helps us look at resources and give us, you know, plan and give us time to work through some of those projects that were identified in the facility study, sorry. From an economical standpoint, like, how are we gonna finance that? You know, is it gonna be CIP? Is it gonna fit within that one point two, or do we gotta find other funding? And then when other funding is available, whether it's grants, some other new funding like Esser when that came, we're in a good position to quickly apply for those. So again, this is something that I will, at minimum, review bi-annually, update, reprioritize, things like that. And again, as you had already learned, we budget one point two, one point two six, but last year we did spend two, two point three five, which was a, a combination of the CIP budget, Fund forty-six and my operations budget. Next slide. which was a, a combination of the CIP budget, Fund Forty-Six and my operations budget. Excellent. Um, so this is nothing more than a bunch of screenshots, um, but it again, it is linked there. Everybody has access to that. It was on the Situation Report. Um, but you'll see the way that this is broken down is we have the rows, um, kind of coming over. Um, that identifies the projects and dollars associated to those projects. Um, it starts really with the current year, but year one really starts in twenty-four, twenty-five, so the upcoming, um, fiscal year. Um, and then we do the best we can. Like, I know what we are doing this summer because we already started that bidding process and approval process. But beyond that, I'm just taking that facility study, picking things off based on how we prioritize that or maybe new information that I have, um, and start plugging that in. But things can change. Um, a good example of how things could change, especially within this upcoming year, is when we did go out to bid for roofing. Those bids were very competitive. We had five roofers show up and walk the roofs. They knew who they were bidding against, so they became very competitive. So we saved something like eighty to ninety thousand dollars in our roofing bids, which allowed me to move forward with some more mechanical replacements. So there's more mechanicals that might have been down further in that capital improvement pla- uh, the Capital Improvement Plan, but we're able to move things up. Literally today, just talking about this Ben Franklin situation, I already know that I'm gonna probably have to shift things around a little bit. But that's part of my task to, to take a look at this often, right? Not just biannually. Um, but they can move up and down. You know, I think we would all expect that, especially, you know, if new things arise. We, you know, thank you.
Yep. So I'm just jumping on this last one. So if we take a look at this particular page, I know the numbers are very small here. But if you look at twenty-four, twenty-five, which is where I have the cursor, and we slide that all the way over to the last year of twenty-three, sorry, twenty thirty-three, thirty-four, each of those years is designed somewhere around one point two-six million dollars. So that coincides with our capital improvement budget out of operations. We'll pay for it out of Fund Forty-Six because we'll transition those dollars to Fund Forty-Six, but that's our operating capital improvement budget. Are other projects gonna pop up during the course of those ten years? Hundred percent guaranteed. Something else is gonna happen that either might require us to use Fund Forty-Six because these projects in that particular year are still so important, we have to get them done. Or we're gonna shift something else around, or referendum comes through and knocks some of these projects off because that building no longer exists or it's getting fixed with an upgrade, something like that, right? So there's a myriad of things that are gonna happen over the course of the next ten years. But at this point, we're planning that one point two-six million dollars for each of the next ten years is the ten-year capital improvement plan. And it's again, based off of that overall facility study that was completed last summer. And then Andy goes through with C.D. Smith and says, these are the highest priority items. What can I fit in one point two-six million dollars, right? It's a, we still have that kind of finite amount that we're trying to fit with them. So that's the ten-year capital improvement plan.
Yeah, and I would just say like, obviously you'll see some years where it's higher than one point two-six. That's my subtle hint to Andy, they give me more. No, it's not really. Um, but, um, but when I actually start plugging numbers in off of that facility study, I'm not gonna play around a whole lot and trying to just balance it at one point two-six. I'm gonna take those actual numbers, maybe do a little rounding, but when, when, when we start doing bidding, it might come under. Maybe it'll come over and I'll have to ax a project and find something else. But, so you'll see a little variance in those numbers over the course of those ten years.
I assume we, we, at some, at ten years from now, one point two-six million dollars will not be one point two-six million dollars. But also they won't, they'll cost about the same amount more. Is that what we're sort of planning, right? The percentage?
I, I would tell you, if you had asked me this question like six years ago, construction costs typically went up somewhere from three to five percent every year. You could probably, pretty close. COVID slaughtered that. Some things have returned to, uh, not even, I wouldn't say normal, but have returned much more significantly than others. Um, roofing being one of those has returned a little bit faster than some other areas. Um, three years ago, I know that roofers were only allowed to do like one or two projects per school because they were afraid that schools were hoarding roofing or just, not schools, but businesses in general. So they were limiting the amount of projects they would allow businesses to do to kind of spread the wealth because it just didn't exist and was a crazy high. So, um, well, those, uh, we won't be doing the same amount of projects today, ten years from now, if we stick at one point two-six million dollars. But, I mean, the law just tells us things are going up. Another component we were adding to the Capital Improvement Plan, the Ten-Year Capital Improvement Plan, is the five years that Luann presented before Andy. The rationale again is we're moving it into Fund Forty-Six. Part of using Fund Forty-Six dollars is the requirement of a board-approved ten-year capital improvement plan. Again, we're taking these infrastructure pieces and moving them to Fund Forty-Six so that we're not worried about the June thirtieth deadline. Prime example is, um, should the board approve this? Luann's ready to cut loose a bunch of POs for Chromebooks and other, I'd like to tell you what all the other hardware is, but truthfully, I'm a technology idiot. So, um, like she wants to cut all those loose. But right now, in our current structure, if we wait for Fund Ten, we run into the problem of having them on the dock on June twenty-fifth. And the auditor says, those have to be this fiscal year, right? So that intention is nope, we're buying them for next year. So we're trying to avoid that particular piece. So you'll see technology here simply to allow us to purchase things, to have them in-house, give technology enough time to work on things over the summer, install them, interface computers or whatever it is, the image, I believe is the term, image computers do whatever it is they do. There's one other particular piece that we're adding to the Ten-Year Capital Improvement Plan. You'll see Fund Forty-Six attached to it too. This is for teaching and learning. So, um, kind of to preview the May twenty-second preliminary budget, I asked all of the departments again to go out of zero-based budget process. So start from ground zero and build up. Bob and his department came back at somewhere around a million, a million fifty from about one point three-five million the previous year. So it was down a few hundred thousand dollars. Bob, like what's, like, what's the massive difference? And he's, basically he went back, it's the ELA purchase. ELA is so massive from a curricular standpoint that it absorbs a lot of dollars. So I go, okay, kind of fill me in, like, what is the other big adoptions that we're gonna have to worry about? Um, so math K-eight, ELA K-eight are the largest that we're gonna have to. So what we've added here is the idea that we're gonna purchase these out of Fund Forty-Six. Now, we are able to purchase curricular materials out of Fund Forty-Six, so DPI does allow that. The idea isn't that we're gonna necessarily transfer six hundred thousand dollars in twenty-six, twenty-seven to buy math. The idea is what we're gonna add to Bob's budget every year is about a hundred fifty thousand dollar transfer into Fund Forty-Six. So by the time twenty-six, twenty-seven rolls around, we'll use a portion of teaching and learning and we're gonna take, say, we're, I'm calling it a savings account for ease of what that might mean. The savings account, and we're gonna use that towards the math purchase. Then three years later, four years later, we're gonna be back at ELA. So we'll have been plugging in some dollars in the Fund Forty-Six to save for that. So that seven hundred thousand dollars in twenty-thirty, thirty-one isn't coming onto the books and we're going, where are we coming up with seven hundred thousand dollars? So we're gonna save for it over a period of time. So ideally, we're smoothing out Bob's budget to help make it more manageable rather than having some big ebbs and flows inside of it, is the idea of adding that to Fund Forty-Six. And we'll earmark those funds inside of Fund Forty-Six so we know exactly what's teaching and learning, what's technology. So Luann this year has nine hundred some thousand dollars. If everything goes super great and she comes in at eight hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, we can take a look at some of those extra projects that she might have with the twenty-five or whatever extra thousand dollars is and say, let's plug that here. And then, um, most of Fund Forty-Six's facilities anyway, so that will just sit in kind of the general Fund Forty-Six. But we'll be accounting for those three areas separately so that we're aware of which departments have those allocations.
Question.
Linda, please.
So is this curriculum a one-time cost or is it, I thought it was six hundred thousand for five years, right?
So curriculum is typically six to seven years is when it's recycled. So this math adoption that you see in twenty-six, twenty-seven, that's, um, based on what Bob's work with his team has done, is that's when that's gonna come due. The twenty-thirty, thirty-one ELA adoption is seven years from today, so that's about when that one will come due.
My question is, I thought, so six hundred thousand for reading, the ELA, is it six hundred thousand one-time? Or is it six hundred thousand every year for five years?
No, it's, the, the, what was presented today was a six-year price.
It's a one-time price, yes. Covers six years.
Six years of consumables and different things annually that students need.
So you amortize, if you amortize it, it's a hundred thousand dollars a year.
You keep saying annual and you say one-time. I'm, you know, I, I hear you saying.
You pay it right now and it goes through the date that you're seeing when we're gonna look at ELA again. So what you looked at tonight for the cost, if that adoption goes through in two weeks, covers us up until twenty-thirty, thirty-one that you're seeing on the screen.
It was one-time. It's an upfront cost.
Correct, yep.
For the resource.
For the books, materials.
Yep.
So really what this adjustment's doing is taking the same amount of money that's been budgeted for teaching and learning, but the ebb and flow of these bigger adoption is you're putting in a chunk of this each year into Forty-Six to build up to that, so you don't have that to.
Does the state allow that? Cause you're basically taxing in advance of an approved.
Yep. State allows for you to purchase technology, purch- obviously buildings and grounds, technology.
Out of Fund Forty-Six, I get that. If the money's in Fund Forty-Six, you can use it if you have a plan. But you're getting the money in there by taxing the general fund for something that you're not buying. You're not buying it next year. You're just saving it. Can we tax to save? I'm not aware of that being allowed.
Technically, it's considered an expense when you move it to Fund Forty-Six from your general operations.
Expense for what? How do you book that? How do you book that when there's no, you have to get a check?
Yeah, it's ten E eight one five eight forty-six four eleven zero 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 is how you book that technically. And that's the transfer to Fund Forty-Six from Fund Ten. You receive it under Fund Forty-Six. So forty-six R eight one five zero 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 five hundred thousand.
And you don't have to give me the numbers.
Well, that, that's how we account for it.
Is that fund balance or is it an expenditure?
It's an expenditure out of Fund Ten. It's a revenue out of Fund Forty-Six.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll be bringing back the Ten-Year Capital Improvement Plan, which includes Andy's ten-year portion of B and G, Luann's portion of technology and Bob's portion of, um, teaching and learning for approval on the twenty-second. And that allows us to expend those items out of Fund Forty-Six, um, as again, required by, um, DPI to have that Ten-Year Capital Improvement Plan, um, approved by the board.
Anybody else have any further questions?
I just had a quick question.
Mary, please.
Um, under this, I, I understand what roofing is and ADA compliance. What is life safety?
So like fire systems, um, uh, mainly fire systems. So. I think if you look in the facility study, um, I just closed my screen, so I can't pull it up from there. But if you look in the facility study and some of those tabs, you'll see some of the, um, projects identified as life safety, um, but mainly fire systems.
Anybody else? Please, Linda.
So does the state also require any kind of policy around that, that you're having a five-year plan and how you're approving it? Does the board need policy around that?
Yep, they do. Um, actually, that would have been approved by the board in twenty-seventeen when Fund Forty-Six was established. Um, I believe it was twenty-seventeen. So you approve, um, the establishment of a separated bank account. So that's a requirement and you can start that with one dollar. You could start it with a million dollars, but you just have to have a separate bank account with the starting dollar. That sets a five-year clock from the day the board approves it to when dollars can officially be expended. So in twenty-twenty-two, I don't know what the official date was in twenty-seventeen, but five years after that in twenty-twenty-two, you can actually expend dollars out of it. Again, the only requirement is that you have a Ten-Year Capital Improvement Plan and those expenditures tie to the Ten-Year Capital Improvement Plan. So in thinking about the plan we're gonna ask you to approve today, we'll be bringing that back next year at the same time. So if other projects come on board that we're not currently planning for, for twenty-four, twenty-five, let's say the pool has another catastrophic thing and now we're doing something different to it, that we're probably spending Fund Forty-Six, we're gonna bring that in around May and say this project was also, uh, done. We paid for it out of Fund Forty-Six because we don't have operational dollars. We'd ask you to approve that. Um, football field's probably due in a couple of years, so we're gonna plop that on there at some point. Um, at this point, we'll try to get as far as we can, right? So we don't have a specific year, but at some point that's coming on. Again, that's, it's a replacement, so that's probably a five hundred thousand dollar repair, depending if you have to do anything to the track. But we'll put that in in that particular year. We'll pay for that out of Fund Forty-Six. So Andy's not saying, oh, we're not gonna do roofing or we're not gonna do some HVAC repair. We're not gonna do this. We're gonna put a football field down. Like, we know we have this ninety-six million dollars of stuff to make our buildings run for educational purposes. We'll find another way to pay for the field.
For clarification, I think Fund Forty-Six must have been implemented before two thousand seventeen because I think we bought that land on Ryan Road.
Maybe it's fifteen, maybe it's fifteen.
In nineteen with that, um, and it was that, and it was the first thing we bought out of Fund Forty-Six. Doesn't, doesn't matter, but I think it must have been fourteen or fifteen. Anybody else have further questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Better Place to Work Task Force, Mr. Cromie, Ms. Lankour, Mrs. Bennett, please.
All right, so I'll present tonight from the Better Place to Work Task Force. So this is part of kind of a three-part series, right? Board members have been present for, or will be present for, school presentations that the Better Place to Work Task Force is doing in each of their schools to get a first look at what the plan is that they've put together collaboratively through the group. Tonight, I'm really just building the story to it. Like what got us here? Why was this created? Um, and, and then the outcome will be what they bring forward on the twenty-second. It'll be, uh, the group that was on this committee that will be presenting that at that time. So a little bit of the why behind the work. This slide probably looks familiar. Oh, sorry, I have to use the clicker, not my computer. So, sorry about that. A little bit of the why. Um, so this slide's familiar when we went through my entry plan upon being hired and then at the end of last year and completing it, these were some of the stats I brought forward. And in that process, the things in particular on white on the screen were my check-ins, meet and greets, stay interviews, um, entry interviews that I did with instructional coaches, special education coaches, meet and greets in all of our schools, plus stay interviews that any staff could sign up through gear-ups, uh, meeting with the administrators, um, and district leaders. So that's where the basis of some of the next pieces came in the Better Place to Work Task Force. So a statement I shared at that time is that really a goal moving forward is looking at shared leaderships in areas such as school goal-setting, compensation, well-being, professional development. The color coding is really aligning to our better place to work, better place to learn, part of a better community. Um, so key communicators we saw and have been doing now for two years was a big addition to address the part of a better community. We did a soft rollout of a better place to learn team this year that'll be hitting the ground running next year, um, and looking at, continuing to look at those standards and things you heard about tonight. We're here to talk about tonight is the Better Place to Work Task Force. So that well-being compensation piece was a theme that was heard throughout this whole variety of discussions that took place throughout the district. It became apparent by like April of last year that that was going to be one of the big things for us as a district to focus on, to really show value to what it means to be a better place to work and has been the collaborative work that has been taking place. So in April of last year, uh, just when we're looking at where this story went, staff was introduced to the concept of this task force that it would be starting this coming school year. Part of the reason we rolled it out at that time was to, to share that we understand and hear you, that we need to look at well-being, we need to look at compensation. We need to define this better and we need voice, um, from a variety of stakeholders to get to that. So that was the commitment coming into this school year, that that was work that we were gonna do and that Laura Lankor and Andy Cromie were gonna work with me on and have been great leaders in that process. So at that time and through May of last year, we sent out a Google form, um, for any and all staff across the district, not just teachers, to be involved in this committee. We had thirty-six staff members that showed an interest in being a part of that. Um, from that, we selected this, the group that's on the screen. Uh, the gold box in the bottom right corner really identifies what that looked like. It was important and it's continued to be important that all schools are represented and they have been, um, some more often than others. Every now and then people can't make it, but for the most part, it's stuck true to this list. Years of experience is anywhere from one year to thirty-four years on this team, um, that you're seeing on the screen in a variety of roles. So it's not just educators, it's EAs, it's coaches, it's cross-cat. So again, when we're, when we're being subjective or we're looking and judging, thirty-six staff members were interested. This was the group that came forward. We're looking to continue this group next year. Talk a little bit about that on the twenty-second. Can obviously add other people to the group if people wanna swap out, um, and be a part of the work to make us a better place to work. So when we went into this year, we thought it's probably gonna be about three meetings. I don't know. How long is this going to take? It's been seven meetings. So our first group meeting was on October nineteenth. Uh, we brought together the group you saw on the screen prior. Um, and that group went back then as representatives. We talked about you represent the voice of your building and your stakeholder group, um, and to share at your building as we go along, which I think the group has done a nice job of. And it's been conversations in the room that there's differing viewpoints, um, but it's been cordial and it's been respectful. And I wish for it to continue to be that way moving forward. Um, so at that time, actually, I'll get a little more into the work they did there, but this is kind of the span of the work throughout the year and the times that we came together. This group volunteered their time, uh, came to this room four thirty to six and, uh, worked for dinner, which we really appreciate. So communication with all staff. So I think lesson learned in the health insurance experience of the last couple of months was this belief that this table, in particular, the district-level leaders weren't gonna. this belief that this table, in particular the district level leaders, weren't going to make an effort to communicate with our staff. Uh that couldn't be further from the truth. And so we're going to be very, very transparent in the process with the Better Place to Work Task Force, that it has been transparent. It will continue to be, and the communication plan um has been thorough and been followed through on. Uh because our commitment is to continue to bring the district together um through these communications. So in April, May last year, you saw the introduction, everybody had the opportunity um to apply to be a part of this, knowing that we were looking for balance on teams and representation from all schools. Um October, we started that work, series of seven meetings. I think the Franklin fine is a really important aspect to look at. Uh Chad and I have talked often about the Franklin fine continues to come back through survey data as something that the staff finds valuable to gain information. Um we have to continue to find ways to get every staff member engaged in reading it. As you can see, just through Better Place to Work, there's been seven different times that we've given updates. A lot of times in particular in my messaging at the beginning of that, on the work going on in an effort to be transparent. Uh the same was going on with health insurance, that was going through Franklin fine too. So now we'll do a quick view through what that looks like, so through the meetings. Um just to give you an idea of where we grounded in the why that we based, we really tried to talk off of data and truths versus feelings and emotions to get us to what we want. Um it to be defined as to be a better place to work. So it wasn't ideas that Andy, Laura, or I brought to the table, it was ideas that were generated in the group um and throughout the work. So the first meeting, we came together, you're you're familiar with this data, Laura presented this, I think, last October to the board. You know, we're transparent, did we have turnover? We did. Um did it go up more than we'd want to? Yes. Did that happen in the state also? Absolutely. But we don't want it to be that high in Franklin, so we talked about that, grounded ourselves in data. Uh we talked about that difference that Laura shared in October at the board meeting about leaves and moves. So moves being people that are ones that we would hope that, we would hope we could keep everybody in district, but a move means like I maybe went to another area district because I could make more money in the same kind of job. That staff that we feel we can do a better job at retaining. When we broke down those numbers, so this is our turnover data, just taking us down memory lane a little bit. Um it's, the numbers are small in that blue and orange that pop out, but it came down to, I think, seven staff members that we could work to retain. So again, grounding in data, uh we talked about what does budget look like from that high-level view? Obviously, we've seen a lot of these pieces tonight, uh but that salaries and benefits in Franklin right now sits at about seventy-two percent of our budget. Um and the advantage tonight was we saw capital improvement, we saw tech plans, we saw Fund Forty Six holding of money to try to pay off bigger expenses. We saw ELA adoption, so some of those things that we can't not have expenses for as a district and where those sit um in what we're doing. After that meeting, um staff went back and the team went back and presented to the staff in their schools about them being on the committee, being the voice for people to go through them, to bring it back to the team, to make sure that that communication flow was there. Um also, at that time, a Google form was uh pushed out to all staff to give the ideas of what are the things that matter most to you when we talk about this being a better place to work. The committee or the task force also had asked for what has CPI looked at over time, so our next meeting grounded in this data um off of that piece. I would say the thousand-dollar retention bonus, also a lot of our discussion last year and being able to do that uh was to show staff that we are going to come around this work this school year. And some people would say like, well, I want to know of that raise now, coming into this year and not wait a year. Well, that would have been Andy, Laura, and I sitting in a room creating something, which we could have done, and and imposing it, and is not what we believe in or the standard we're going to walk by. So a thousand dollars was, we are committed to you, we care about you. Give us time to bring people around this work and really define it this coming year. So I think so far, we've followed kind of in that path that we promised. The poll survey results, this was again a moment for us to ground as a team, like we had really good momentum going and continue to. Like this was our spring survey last year, so again, we're looking at this this past fall. Like, we're engaged and we have good momentum, so how do we continue to define who we are as a workplace uh to continue that momentum? The survey results, like I said, all of the members presented back at their schools, everybody could give input. We had, I think, outstanding response, three hundred seventy-six. You can see the variety of um different groups, stakeholder groups that responded. And then we started to look at what are those top areas, right? The list is big, and we'd love to say we could tackle it all, but what you're going to hear from the task force in two weeks is we tackled like the top five, which I think is a really good chip for the first year, if I'm injecting my personal opinion on that. Um but also the commitment to continue to work next year to see what is working and how are things working thus far with what we choose to implement, and the board approves in two weeks, and what are the next pieces that we're going to work towards. So those top areas, hard to read, but those are the items that we have outcomes for from the work of the committee this year, that they will be bringing and presenting to you, like I want them to be here to celebrate and honor that work with you. December twelfth, we came back together, we continued around the big buckets. So the big buckets are those, well, I'm not going to go all the way back, but those gold blocks, those bigger pieces, the PTO, the compensation, uh some calendar items, some uh professional development pieces that came through. Uh a lot of poster papers around the room, a lot of collaboration around tables, uh thinking through those ideas. The one on the far right is budget neutral reductions are ideas too. That's a committee, that, the committee's meeting again on May twenty-first to continue conversations on some of those pieces. So that that commitment of work is still there. February twenty-seventh, just some pictures, because we continued that same work. Uh I think at this time, we're working deep into the PTO discussions that you'll hear about um in two weeks. March twelfth, uh we're still at the work. This time, we've moved now towards like what do pay structures look like? So one of those top five areas was having a pay structure. So you'll see a variety of different districts' structures up here, you'll see top-out salaries where only stipends are offered, um and kind of more a stepper lane that you might call it. We looked at performance pay, what does that mean? So did a study, again, grounding in like what are some of these other districts doing that we talk about, and what aligns to what the task force feels like we should focus on here? Moving into the next meeting, um finished that discussion about pros and cons of those different models. And then as a team determined, here's the ideal state elements that we want to work towards. So now the team grounded in these seven bullet points. They wanted something that's transparent, stability overall in the framework, some predictability of like benchmarks. They wanted recognition of we're educators, so let's honor the education we're getting, so that master's degree discussion import- and importance came back into the discussion of what matters. Um and then to continue adding the stipends that we have for like school improvement team and some of the other stipend work that's in the district. So often, we had to go back and ground in, these are the things that we want our proposed model to meet, uh that that team will bring forward next on two weeks. Our final meeting, we were able to to go forward with this group and share like this is the board approval of the health insurance plan coming forward, again, reminding that like the whole package is the insurance and the salary, and we know this piece at this point in time. And then we came back to, and what you're going to see next. So really, that's the story and the grounding of the work and the deep work that went on with the task force. These gold boxed items are what the team will pick up with on May twenty-second and talk about the project, the plans that they've put together um with their staff and that they've now shared. At that point, we'll have shared with all of the schools moving forward. So I'm thankful for board members being present for those presentations. I know you had to adjust schedules, but I think it's been really nice to be able to be in buildings, see staff, and hear a variety of voices around, you know, what we think's going to work well, where there's still some areas that people may not fully find it fitting for them personally, and we know that will happen, we're not going to find the perfect model for everybody um in every way, but that this, what they're bringing forward is a plan to start with and to continue to talk about. Um and gives us something more than what we currently have and gives us a spot to move forward from. So any questions about the, that's all I have to tell about this story of it, but wanted to give that preview ahead of the the bigger work that the task force gets to present um to you for a second time when they come on the twenty-second. But any questions about just the process, the why to it, the the work that's been done that that I can answer tonight? Or they can hold for, like you'll have a variety of the task force with you in a couple of weeks?
Go ahead, Linda, please.
Do you have this? I mean, I can't read the, what those are. I'm interested in knowing what those top things are, but I can't read it. Can we send us a slide deck?
Sure, yeah, you saw this yesterday when you were at the Pleasant View. Yep, yeah, it was on the Pleasant View slide, but we will have it absolutely linked for the twenty-second too.
Can you send it now, or?
I can send it after, I can put it in Friday's update. Um it's going out to all staff next Wednesday afternoon after the final school presentation at Forest Park.
Okay, next Friday, not this Friday.
We prefer to just push it out all at the same time, but if the board wants it this Friday, that's fine.
I feel like we've seen this somewhere before.
This has been in the school presentations, yeah.
I know, I've seen it before, but I couldn't read it then either, so.
Sure, yeah, we'll share it, for sure.
No, I just want to thank you for reminding us how much hard work this committee did and how collaborative of a process it truly was. And I'm astonished by honestly how much progress you were able to make in less than a year. That's not a question, it's a comment.
And then I know, I talked to Laura, I know there's a smaller committee that's talking about bance lawyers or or staff that aren't educators, like the support staff and and so it it's good that that's all. Is that going to be ruled out on the twenty-second then? I can't remember.
That will be ruled out on the twenty-second, so uh things that are continuing, like in the immediate, along with the task force continuing next school year is first, the no-cost pieces, that committee group, kind of a subgroup or as many can make it, we'll talk about that on the twenty-first, and then Laura's going to work on adding. We had a few staff members, but not as much voice as we'd want, like we didn't have any custodial staff um that was in this team. So that side force that Laura's going to start working up with all of us is taking the people that were in this. So Mary was a part of it, Terry Tubbs was a part of it, I'm forgetting one name and I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um that group and adding a few more voices to it from other stakeholder groups to continue that work.
It, you talk about next year, it was presented in, not in two weeks, that'll continue to be built on for next year? Like, this is, you know, we're presenting this today, and this is the salary schedule or whatever else, but then the Better Place to Work is going to continue to work next year, and so it could be tweaked again, and we could reevaluate that, or this is a one.
So the Better Place to Work, that's a great question. So the Better Place to Work Committee and Learn Committee will both continue next year. The focus of the Better Place to Work Committee will be twofold. One is, it was really important to the task force to be committed to coming back around reviewing it. Like, we promised we would, but we will, and those dates will be out there. So part of it will be like, let's get back mid-year after things have been implemented. Talk about what that has looked like, what's going well, is there anything we need to tweak or look at differently? The other part of what the Better Place to Work Task Force will be doing, and this was Andy's idea, which I really enjoy, is that um focusing on health insurance, right? So there's a lot of lessons learned over the last two weeks, like let's get out and talk about health insurance earlier then, and make it part of this task force to be looking at what are the pieces that we are constantly looking at in a shifting health insurance world. So that'll be their bigger new focus area, but then also reviewing and looking at how is what gets proposed and approved hopefully in two weeks? How's it going? Is there tweaks we need? And then continuing down that this list, if there's some other things that we can be be looking at next. Does that answer that?
Yeah, that does answer that, but now you teased Andy's thing, it's like, oh, so that same group of, I forget, you said it was like thirty people or whatever, would have some voice in the different healthcare options that come out next year? Like, we need to make these changes, here are some of the things that we're looking at, and they'd be able to, the way that they talk to their buildings, this year, they'd be able to talk to their buildings next year about that.
The goal would be, yeah, to be more informative in building knowledge and understanding. I think some of the learning going around to schools is that there is varied understanding of how health insurance works and what the impact is and what that means in a package. So I think it's sharing of information and showing where cost savings can be or adjustments maybe have to be made. What I would want to do is fully promise right now, it's just going to come down to a vote of the task force. I think we all know that health insurance is is tricky and difficult, right? So we know we're going to have to continue to make adjustments next year um because our our decision so far will will help us for a year, and then we're going to have to be back at the table with something. But to be better informed along that way and and get input from staff for sure to help uh guide that decision.
Is there a role or an opportunity for, or maybe it's forbidden, for a board person to be part of this?
Part of the Better Place to Work Task Force? I think it's something like Mike and I could talk about, or the board can talk about.
I don't want to commit, commit, you know, somebody that is, would not be me to attend an extra meeting or what have you, but I I just find it very interesting and productive, and like Ann said, tons of work, and Angie, tons of work has been done. And I just want to, wanted to know if there was a a role for the board person or not, maybe.
Can I add something here, Annalee?
Absolutely.
I think what was really important from Annalee, Laura, and my position was trying to be as quiet as possible and let the task force bring ideas and then try to put those ideas to life, right there, like uh uh the compensation one was, those are, those are the seven bullet points. Okay, now we have to try to figure out what is, what could we do that can ma- make as many of those as possible? Or, and thing about PTO was a list of things that they would like, how do we do that? And how do we try to serve everybody under that umbrella? So I, like I, I can, in seeing that with a board member on there, it'd be important that, like, we're following that structure. A lot of it is listening, like I, I sat and listened a lot, like in, and would interject if I was asked questions or if I needed to, or if there was. Um I tried to leave my opinion out as much as possible. I will say it's, it's very hard to do that at times, but you tried to do it as much as possible to like it's, I, we reiterated right away at the beginning, this is your plan, we're going to try to make it work and see what we can. So uh and that was really for every aspect of that, you'll see five aspects or four or five aspects, right? And every aspect of that was, this is yours, we'll try to make it work. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, some of the ideas like that, to do that is just not feasible at this particular time. So let's maybe step back and start here and see how does that work? Because long-term, it could be feasible, but right now, like, that's a pretty big jump to do, so.
I would say some examples of discussions like that would be like when, when you see and hear about the model, with some of you have in schools already, and in two weeks for sure. You know, could we just tap into like fund balance to adjust things first and then still have the four point one, two percent across everybody? And so it's having the discussions about like, that would be nice if it was a one-time expense, but if we are dipping into Fund Ten to do that now, then every year that expense would have to come from somewhere year over, so it would work for a year, but then we're still going to have to figure out where that comes from. And getting back to the the tough conversation of we're funded in the way we're funded, and so there's not, we're not for profit where we can bring more money in to make the pot bigger, we have to pull from somewhere if we're going to do that. And I think those were probably the trickiest conversations as always in schools and in the room um in those moments too, and like really trying to ground back in like the facts and the data and like what we can do with what we have. And I'd say that's probably the biggest parts that we had to speak to is just getting back to understanding those parts.
You know, um teachers are the biggest assets in our district, and I'm very pleased at least to see that the initiative which you have rolled out, Annalee, you know, with the Better Place to Work Act first. Hopefully, we will to address the teachers' concerns, you know, moving forward, and we are a- able to address the concerns and being more collaborative. And this will um result in teacher attention. You know, I think, you know, yesterday when I saw the presentation, which was led by the teachers, by the committee members and all that stuff, it was very encouraging to see that they are invested uh in the committee, they are leading the discussions, you know? Uh and it was very encouraging to see um a kind of positive emotion, you know? Uh generally, by the presentation there yesterday when I was there, so it was very encouraging. And I'm, I'm hoping that this will kind of, you know, because it's not easy to, especially even increasing salaries of teachers and everything to make up the median sal-, you know, other stuff. This is a tough, tough task, which Andy has been kind of, you know, been given and trying to find out and um and trying to please as many people as possible, you know? It's a tough uh balance to do, but I'm very, very pleased at least, as for your sister's presentation and moving forward and thinking, uh hopefully that this will translate into teacher attention, but understanding and a better collabora- collaboration in the district and administration asset.
Annalee, so a lot of the things that um I wanted to say um far as collaboration, as far as, look, this is, this is a goal to get to to keep retention on, and um there's a lot of collaboration. Um I really appreciated that um every board member was able to make a meeting um or is making an upcoming meeting. Um and I would say, Mary, that um it's, I think it's our job to be at that meeting and listen and and not, it's really hard to be at those meetings and not talk, and it's difficult sometimes for the people to be at those meetings during the year and see the board members there and not talk, but maybe others feel differently, and we can talk about that at a different time. Um but um but I just appreciate the collaboration and the willingness to move forward um and to work with, uh to work together to try and make it, make this the best district we can. So um uh to get better and better, Linda, like we talked about a couple of years ago, or a couple of weeks ago, right? Um so at any rate, um I I don't know if anybody has any further comment or questions. I know we're going to hear the meat of this um in a couple of weeks, um but I appreciate.
everything that's been put into this. Does anybody have anything further? All right, thank you very much. Board policy, or excuse me, board liaison roles for twenty-four, twenty-five, those are in front of everybody, I know everybody filled out the survey, or most people filled out the survey, I appreciate that, the school liaison roles are, are on a rotation, I don't know what that rotation exactly looks like, but I think certainly this is my sixth year and my sixth different school next year. I've tried to give people different schools for different years. I think the board liaison roles with administration, I think we talked about that over the last year, that those should be sort of rotating, so you shouldn't have the same one twice in, in five years or something, so I know some people didn't get exactly what they wanted, but I think we're gonna try and make that, I hope we can make that sort of rotation like we do with the schools. Additional assignments, I, I don't know that those have to ro, have to rotate as much as they have, or as much as, as much as the other ones. I will stay at CSU, we've switched Angie and Linda will switch, Angie will be at SWSA and Linda will be the WASB. I know you put it on the survey as like your second or third choice or something.
You did?
Yeah. We can talk about that when the time comes. But it's, it's a one-day thing, right, so.
I've done my time.
Well, we can, we can flip a coin when we get to that. You don't wanna do that, is what you're saying.
I, it's, I've done it, it's excruciatingly.
Painful.
Painful, yes.
Got it.
I have done it, so it's not like I haven't done it.
Got it, no, I appreciate it, I understand what you're saying. You guys, we can arm wrestle for it later, although I don't think I can do it as board president. So at any rate, we will, these will be the assignments for this year. I kept CSU, so Moxu didn't get an additional assignment. There aren't seven board liaison roles to begin with, so governmental relations isn't really in that, but the, that's an additional one, so at any rate, that's what the liaison assignments look like for this year, we can certainly talk about them for next year, but I look forward to, I look forward to new experiences. Does anybody have any comment other than the delegate comment? Certainly that's something we can talk about before the convention. All right, thank you very much. Policies sixty-two-ten, English language learners, sixty-four-thirty, services for children with disabilities, sixty-four-sixty, gifted and talented, sixty-seven thirteen, assistive technology and services, all Mr. Ekman, and fifty-five-hundred records, retention and confidentiality of student records, fifty-two-sixty, search and seizure, Ms. Lancourt and Dr. Moe. So does anybody have any questions for any of those three people on any of those policies?
I lost track of the policies that you're I have a question about.
They're all available.
Okay. The question I had was on the gifted and talented.
Sixty-four-sixty.
Yes. And my question is, the language says the district encourages efforts to provide services for children. My concern is that it's kinda like, we are encouraging it, but we're not gonna guarantee that your child is gonna get services that they need or deserve or something, that I, that idea of that encourages, that's, I just, I, I don't know, thoughts?
Is there some different language you'd like to see there?
Guarantees that your kid gets what they want or need, not wants, but needs, I mean, and I don't think you can say guaranteed, but I think it's important that there is a policy that states that if your child is identified, they will actually get more, you know, whatever, whatever it is that they need, which in general is like a differentiated instruction, and I think the policy should, should say that.
I think it, do you? I think it does in the beginning paragraph, yeah.
You have to have a program, but there's, the state is pretty vague on exactly what services would that mean. So we're required to have someone who coordinates it, we're required to have a program, you're right about, like, that's not our choice.
I read that as saying that encourages efforts to provide services as an integral part of the program, not standalone.
Could you just say the district strives to provide services?
The language might say the way it is, I just, I think that there, I think it leaves us open to a parent coming in and saying, my kid isn't getting what I think they should get, and there's no policy that, you know.
I've actually heard people say that, you know, like, yes, that their child who, the focus is so much on learners who are struggling, which is, it should be, but I've heard people say that my child who's gifted doesn't have as many opportunities as I'd like them to have, so, I don't know.
So, and, I mean, the first paragraph, you're right, it does say, you know, committed to educating our students, achieving their highest level, you know, all students will have access to an education commensurate with their individual abilities, needs, and interests. Yes, it's there, but then when you come back and say, we encourages efforts to provide these services, it's kinda like, yeah, but if, I don't know, to me, it just, it sounds like we're gonna encourage it, but if we're, if we're busy that day, it's not gonna happen, I don't know, I mean.
And I feel like that, that par, paragraph is talking about the fact that it's not gonna be a pullout, that that's how I read the paragraph that you're focusing on, that it's integrated into their experience as opposed to
Separate standalone.
Right. Coordinated, systematic, continuous learning activities.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can see that, and I can understand that, I just, I don't know how you quantify that, or like ensure that that is happening on an individual basis for, you know.
Well, that's a larger question though than our policy, right, like if our policies, our policy says, all gifted and talented students shall have access to an education commensurate with their individual abilities, that gives a parent legs to stand on if they wanna say, my child is not receiving an education commensurate with their abilities. Right? I mean, we shouldn't be sit. I don't know, pushing back on you.
I, no, I appreciate the, I, I can see what you're saying. I, I guess I'm, you know, like what Mary said, and, you know, different experiences, I don't know that that feels that way to a family.
But I don't know that changing the wording of the policy is the, is the solution, the pol, the, the way the policy reads, it should be happening. That's my, does anyone, I will stop talking now.
The last paragraph I think has a little stronger language too, maybe, and that addresses that. Yeah. I don't, I don't, no, I don't, I don't need a different word, I just, I don't know.
I don't, I, I just wanna make sure that students, like the policy is being, maybe you're right, Angie, maybe it's more about hearing from families, they don't feel the policy is being followed as much, it's not about changing the policy, it's about changing the approach or something, but.
Well, I would encourage your families are saying something to you outside of this policy, then they should be sent to myself or Director of Teaching and Learning, really, because I've had one conversation in my two years here, so then we just have to get those voices to us so we can resolve that, right, or, or Leo, like, our team will look at it, but I've only heard that once, and we addressed it in my time, so I think just, whatever the language is, I can live with it, or can decide that, but just get those voices to us is what I really want, like, so Mary, if you're hearing from someone, make sure I get it, we can disseminate it to the team.
Well, well before my time of, on the board.
Great.
I mean, it's a new sentence, you could take the sentence out and keep it as it was.
No, I, I don't need to change anything, I just wanted to have that conversation.
Good talk.
I didn't see a ton to change in the policy, honestly, if, if that's an edit that helps, we can do that.
No, it, it sounds like the rest of the board read it differently than I did, and I can see that, so, that's fine.
Well, I think, I, I do think it's important that, that they, those families, if they do have questions, are are sent to the right people to advocate for, but I think it's, I, I think the policy is as sufficient as it is, as long as our programming remains rigorous. I think it is, so. Anybody have any, any questions on any other, any of the other policies?
I did have one on, I did review this with, with Leo, the ones that related to student services, and there was the one that we talked about, I'm trying to remember which one it was, where you were not gonna have a plan, or you were, you were gonna eliminate something, which one was that one?
Which, are, are you looking at the English language learners policy sixty-two-ten? Or is it the services for children with disabilities? I can talk about the first one being the English language learners, did have a conversation with Linda about it, had in that policy added some language affirming the district providing services to English language learners, and included language about the development of an individual language development plan, an ILP, so that's referenced in the policy, is that the change you're referring to, Linda?
It's actually a different one, but that does bring to mind another thing I wanted to bring to the board, and that was, you did reference a report that's given to the state?
Yes.
Which is an ad that was not there before, I was wondering if the board was interested in seeing that report, or it's given to the state, but we don't see it, so I don't know if we wanna add it to an agenda. Not that we decided now, but it's added to the policy, the report is being done, it's sent to the state, and the board doesn't look at it.
The board could look at it.
Is that the one that, that Mr. Ekman sent to us within the last couple of days?
I think it's the, I think what Linda's referring to is the last sentence in green on the policy sixty-two-ten, the district shall take account of limited English proficient students and submit the required report of EL students to the Department of Public Construction as required by law, so that's the end-of-year summary report that goes to DPI. Is that what you're referring to, Linda?
Right. And it's literally a count of students.
That would be part of like your annual report of services or something, wouldn't it?
I don't know that it's report, I think the question is, is that something that we need to review separately?
I don't, that the board needs to review separately?
No. It sounds like something that could easily be just added to your existing, like, student services annual report, like.
How many English language learners do we have in the district?
How many students have IEPs, how many stu, you know what I mean, like that report, and how many students are English language learners?
There's a lot of, like, there's a lot of reports we do for DPI annually, so I think it's just like, what do you actually wanna see as a board, like, there's just requirements of what has to get reported, it's not something that we're not aware of on the bigger scale of what's going on in the district, we can certainly bring it, I just wanna make sure we understand the scope of the amount of reports that DPI requires a school district to do, and
I don't know how that would inform my decision-making in any significant way.
I agree.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I said I don't know how that would inform my decision-making in any significant way.
You don't know how many English language learners we have, do you? You don't know what kind of funding is, it, a lot of this funding is, we don't get a lot of funding from the state for these English language learners, and it's, there's a, there's a lot of them. So I think it would be interesting, but that's your opinion.
Well, you're certainly welcome to look at that report, Linda.
In fact, I did look at the report, you did share it with us, it's actually multiple pages, I wouldn't suggest you look at the whole thing, but I think including that number and somewhere in your annual report would be important.
Just so you know, all those numbers are public information, if you go to wise-public at any point in time, anybody can see on purpose, DPI does that on purpose, anybody can look that up for any district in the state except for some private schools that don't report, so the number and percentage of English language learners, it wouldn't drill down to the languages they speak or anything like that, but it would say the number of students in a given school or a given district at any school in the state.
And isn't it part of a subgroup that they're monitoring in the performance report? English language learners, isn't that a subgroup that they?
It is.
Track?
I'm just telling, if you want the number, you could Google right now, wise-for-disti, or wise-public, and you could do that, that's not something that would ever be kept from anybody, that's public information, the number of kids in a district.
Right, I'm not suggesting it's secret or anything, I'm just, an awareness, is what I'm trying to suggest, but we don't need to do it, I, obviously the board's not interested. That's fine.
All right, thank you, anybody else have further questions on any of these policies? All right, thank you, board liaison reports.
Yep, my board liaison reports tonight, it's Countrydale and Andy times two, so.
And I would echo that same thing, I met with Bob this week, and we talked about the report that you saw here tonight.
Thank you very much.
And I beg, I attended the present view as a board liaison and attended the presentation which was talked about.
Yeah, I think.
We all did.
I know, you.
All right, school and community engagement reports.
Okay, how many people went to an elementary concert and thought it was the cutest thing ever?
I couldn't wipe the dumb smile off my face the whole time.
The place was packed. The place was packed. I was there Monday night for Countrydale, I was told it was the biggest group that had been there yet, by the house manager who's been counting the seats, so.
He does count seats. Saber Center?
It was over six hundred people.
And Saber Center is eight fifty, so that's a pretty big number.
That was a big school.
And kudos to the staff to get them to all, I mean, come out quietly and sing and act, and it.
I heard that the backstage management was a lot trickier than it might have looked from the audience.
I'm sure it was.
I saw some people kinda inching out like.
I'm sure it was, but they did a really good job. It's always fun to see our students at adult age, and I think it's really important for our youngest people, our youngest students to get to that Saber Center and see what that potential is in the future, get to the high school.
And get their parents there too.
I was also at the, the resource fair at the high school, and that was amazing, how many resources are available to families, and I guess probably could've been a few more parents, I think. And I also learned about a new community being developed in Franklin for special needs, a housing facility with its own community is coming to Franklin, so. Wanna share that?
That's cool.
Thank you.
We also, I think a number of us attended the youth apprenticeship breakfast this week, which was a really neat, you know,
Always a good one.
To see what the kids are, you know, have been succeeding at, and also connect with our business leaders and thank them for that support, so that was a good event.
All right, thank you, everyone, future agenda items, Friends of Franklin recognition, Franklin Forward survey results, tobacco poster winner presentation, Tony Morrissey PE Pleasant View presenting on pedometers, foundation purchase, twenty.
The alliteration there.
The alliteration's amazing. Twenty-four-twenty-five preliminary budget info, annual curriculum review adoption, capital improvement ten-year plan adoption, Better Place to Work Task Force report, Buildings and Grounds annual report, all those policies that we reviewed today, sixty-two-ten, sixty-four-thirty, sixty-four-sixty, fifty-five-hundred, fifty-two-sixty, sixty-seven-thirteen are action items, twenty-four-twenty-five SWSA agreement, coherence plan, end-of-year report, and new coherence plan and student handbook, staff handbook, Franklin Forward resolution, annual academic standards adoptions, and CERC building bids, school board meeting debriefing, does anybody have any comments?
You know what I would just say, I appreciate the Better Place to Work Task Force and the process of having us all go to these meetings and scheduling things, whatever else. It was very difficult for me as a board member to be participating in this hearing, community comment, and participating tonight because my meeting, just because my own schedule and the schedule of visits is. It was very difficult for me as a board member to be participating in this hearing community comment and participating tonight because my meeting, just because my own schedule and the schedule of visits is until next week Wednesday. So I, I have a lot of questions about it that I don't really wanna wait until Wednesday for. So in the fut- like, I understand the process and I'm really glad to be able to go to the buildings. But I think in, like, if we were gonna do this system again, it would be really helpful to be able to have all those meetings happen before we have this meeting, if that makes sense. Like, I realize it was kind of last minute to get us to the meetings, whatever else, but like, it's hard to sit here and hear all this, knowing that some people at this table have heard the whole presentation and some people have not. I don't know, maybe that's just me, but you're not.
I agree, I agree with you, I'm going next week with you, I believe, so I could go to South Park.
So just, just something to consider if this kind of situation happens again.
Yeah, so the timing with it was their last meeting was that Thursday, so when I emailed the board the Wednesday, they left us with a couple tasks to do that we got back to them Monday. So like the, there wasn't a way to do it earlier, cause the task force wasn't done till then. And it's kind of gone with like a, I don't wanna say build it as a fly, as you fly, like it's unorganized, but it's just, but we need more time. So we've never kept time and said, no, we gotta be done.
Three meetings and I was.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, that's what I tried to outline in that email, is that's just the reality of the timing. Um, and it was added, knowing that would be difficult, so I appreciate that feedback. Um, otherwise you would've only first heard it on the twenty-second and I didn't think that was going to work well for our board either, to only hear it once and then try to approve it with them here and in time for pieces to get moving before the end of the school year.
And I get all that and I understand it and I appreciate that and I'm looking forward to going and hearing the presentation from the staff. I just, the way this fell, it was just kind of awkward to sit here and not really have the full story, so. I usually feel like we know everything before we get to the tables, so, thank you.
So I think you guys have all heard that uh, Slav society of Milwaukee has purchased the Marcus Cinema. And they are moving their high school there, there'll be, you know, it's thirteen, thirteen or twenty acre lot, you know, the whole thing. They'll be revamping that and all this stuff, so I think it'll take one and a, two years, one and a half years, something like that for the high school to move there. But once they, there may be, there'll be some collabora- if if we want some collaboration, just in case they, we need some in a space and all that stuff, that'll be big huge space. If there is an emergency, we need any assistance, collaborations, I'll be more than happy to, you know, uh, put the contacts together. Um, also, I think there was some news about uh, some property tax going up by five percent, something like that in the news. But I think that has been solved, to my knowledge, so hopefully that will be not affecting.
I was gonna go to the common council meeting last night and I did go and it was packed. And so a friend of mine said, this is gonna go till two AM and I just couldn't.
It went up to three AM actually.
Two forty-four apparently was.
Oh, my god.
Oh, my god.
Okay, well.
It's nine fifteen here.
On that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Uh, motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by, I mean, by Mrs. Spersky, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned at nine thirteen, thank you very much, everyone.